Council will come to order. It is 7:00 PM. We do have a full council tonight and our quorum is present. We'll go to citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form and indicate the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Now, did, Holly, did anybody sign up to speak during this time?
No, Mayor.
All right. Anybody in the audience wanting to speak during citizens' presentations? All right. Three no one. It is 7:01 PM and we will enter into a public hearing. The first item to consider is public hearing regarding a request to amend certain designated plan development number 30, PD 30, conditions on an approximately 26.4 acre tract of land located generally north by Indian Creek Drive, northe- excuse me, generally at the northeast corner of Trophy Club Drive and State Highway 114. Bordered on the north by Indian Creek Drive and on the east by the rear property lines of the residential lots located on Brook Hollow Drive, case number PD AMD 16048. So at this time, we're going to start with a presentation. I think Mike Pacilio is gonna, or no, somebody else is going to make that presentation. Okay. He's going to start it, okay. All right, so please come forward. We'll listen to your presentation. It will allow then for anybody that wants to make comments during the public hearing section to at least have knowledge that you wanted to get in front of the people. All right? So identify yourself, please, for the record.
Thank you. My name is Chase McCree. I am the Chief Financial Officer of Beck Ventures. We are the owners of the property in question. Thank you all very much for permitting us to speak to you this evening. We appreciate the opportunity. We're very excited about the project being ready to kick off and we are ready to go. I'm a finance guy and I've been told by people that it's pretty boring listening to finance people all night, so we've elected to have Mike Pacilio, who many of you have met before, do the presentation for us. I'm available for questions or comments as well, but without further to do, I'll introduce you to Mike Pacilio with North American Properties. Thank you.
Chase. Mike?
Good evening, Mayor Sanders and members of the council. Mike Pacilio, 4956 North O'Connor Road, Irving, Texas. We're here tonight finally with a full development team put together that you've never seen before and never heard before. It includes Beck Properties as the master developer, Green Brick Partners that will be developing the townhomes, Crya Hotels that would like to build a Hyatt Hotel there, and North American Properties doing the multifamily property, and the Weitzman Group doing the retail marketing. Tonight, we'd like to talk a little bit about the approved site plan that has already been done, the proposed site plan, some of the specific requested changes and how that affects the multifamily, the hotel, and the townhomes. We've also added drainage and detention to our list of items to address for you as well. And again, here's the team that we talked about. Crya is a locally-based hotel operator and they own and operate the Hampton Inn here in Trophy Club. They'd like to build and operate a Hyatt Place, which they'll be telling you about more specifically. Green Brick Partners is a publicly traded company. They build and sell townhomes throughout DFW and they're, we expect them to be here also for any questions and comments. I think to begin with, it's good to go back and be refreshed with the approved site plan, call it the approved preliminary site plan. The things that we have discovered that are, that could be improved upon, when we look at the apartment building that had all the retail underneath, our concerns here are that the retail will probably not be leased. We've already come forward in a prior request and asked to change some of that retail to multifamily if it doesn't lease over a period of two years after the building permit is issued. This request will talk about eliminating it completely. We've also discovered the height of the building and how we can reduce that height. We've looked at this retail that is to the north of the apartment building. That would be better, well-suited to be closer to 114. And so if you look at the new proposed site plan, it is, there's very similar conditions around the perimeter of the property, but the interior is what has changed the most, including the removal of any potential municipal buildings and things that were contemplated in the original site plan. So now we've got two rows of townhomes facing one another, a total of 39 townhomes compared to the previous site plan that had 30. So the lots have gotten much bigger and will be a much better product. It also will be a better place to live because you won't be right across the street from this big parking garage that was proposed originally. The apartment building now will be four stories instead of five, so it would be less impact in scale. And we've also moved it back slightly from the 114 corridor to allow for more retail to come together up closer to the highway. There's also the hotel pad that's put in here for the Hyatt Place. And the other buildings are designated for retail or office, depending upon market conditions as they are leased. So just basically, we've gone through this. We've got more green space and patios adjacent to the retail than was previously identified. We're trying to create some type of a gathering point here on the north side of building A2 or A3 and A4. And then you can see side by side where you put the two together, the perimeter is still pretty much as it was before and the other buildings have kind of moved around a little bit, as well as now the townhomes being on both sides of this street over here. So specifically, what we're looking to do is to increase the number of for-sale townhomes to 39 from 30. It would be nine additional homes. The reduction in the height of the overall building on Block B to four stories from five stories currently. Reduce the number of rentals on Block B to 250 from the 283 that would be, including the 33 apartments on the first floor, should the retail not be leased. The elimination of the first floor retail under the apartments and all four floors of that building now would contain multifamily units. We would create what we're referring to as brownstones facing Trophy Club Drive to give it a much more residential feel than previously. We're eliminating the retail-ready units that would be underneath in that retail space. The retail infrastructure and pad sites would be built immediately, but we would eliminate the requirement that the retail on Block A, or some portion of that retail was about 25,000 square feet, would be, would not have to be built at the same time as the apartments and allow that retail to be marketed and the potential for build-to-suits and other things rather than forcing somebody into a building that's already been constructed. We would put three-story brownstones with separate pedestrian entrances on Trophy Club Drive. Eliminate the smallest units in the apartments that were as small as 600 square feet. Establish the minimum one-bedroom at 750 square feet. And move the overall average unit size for the 250 units to be a minimum of 1,000 square feet. We also are proposing to add flexibility to move the clock tower and use an architectural style compatible with surrounding structures if that is moved. And proposing a minimum room count on a hotel that would be reduced to 105 rooms contingent upon a special use permit, which is another request that will be in front of you tonight. We would like to eliminate the requirement for full-service restaurant within the hotel block only, contingent upon the special use permit, and propose an amendment to the building materials that would allow us to have more flexibility with a more modern look than originally contemplated, which was kind of a Mediterranean look that is now being built at Entrada and elsewhere. The other thing that we found in talking to hotel operators was that virtually no hotel today, including the La Quinta Hotels, are no longer using a Mediterranean style. So everyone in the hotel business has gone to a more modern-type structure. The benefits of the amendment would be increasing the number of for-sale townhomes to meet anticipated demand for that product in this market. There'd be fewer multifamily units, a smaller multifamily footprint, and lower height of the multifamily building. The brownstone design of multifamily facing Trophy Club would give the appearance of some single-family dwellings similar to South Lake Town Center. Modification of retail requirements enable the retail developer to build and design, build-to-suit buildings versus building the structures on spec and trying to force that retail tenant into that space. We think that will ultimately lead to better retailers and restaurants. There's more green space now around those retail and restaurant buildings. Increasing the hotel flexibility should enable us to attract a stronger flag to the community. So briefly, in looking at the Trophy Club Drive elevation, this is kind of a two-dimensional look of what the brownstones would be. At the PMZ meeting, we tried to define how the single entrance buildings would work and created a minimum of a two-foot setback to define each one of those entrances onto the street. This type of building also allows us to have more open space along Trophy Club Drive and would limit the building height along Trophy Club Drive to three stories, with the exception of a couple of spots that are going to be visible as they would have been in the proposed, excuse me, in the approved PD as it stands now, because behind those three-story buildings is a four-story structure. And so we're going to, the intent is to hide that structure as much as possible. It's going to be visible in basically three spots. One is on the north side on the corner, the south side on the corner, and in the middle of the building here, which is actually the parking structure. So there's a parking structure in the middle of the building and we're going to make the exterior facade of that structure look just like the building. So from a drive-by, you wouldn't know whether it was a garage or not. Everybody can tell when you drive up 114 at Kirkwood that that is a garage there that's fully exposed in concrete and so forth. This would be an enclosed facade that would look just like the building with the same materials as the adjacent building would be. There's a perspective 3D sketch that shows kind of the sawtooth effect that the brownstones would have across the front as opposed to a solid building facade in the current PD. And that stepping of the building allows for more green space out here for more recreation, pet parks, and things of that sort that the residents who live here will enjoy and like to have. This also gives you a feel for what the four-story garage would look like from Trophy Club Drive. It is approximately 82 feet from the Trophy Club Drive to that garage, and it's about 62 feet to the brownstones out here. So this wall is a step-back of approximately 20 feet. And so this would be a nice breakup of a solid building out here and should feel really good on a drive-by basis. This is an example of the materials that we'd like to use that are a little more contemporary than the Mediterranean architectural style that's currently in the PD. This allows for some brick and stone and other materials that can create a more modern look that we think will be more similar to the hotel and other buildings that are constructed here in PD 30. The preliminary unit mix for the multifamily would basically be 60% one-bedroom and 40% two-bedroom. The smallest unit would be 755 square feet, the largest almost 1,600 square feet, and the average unit size is just over 1,000 square feet. Another thing to note is that the entire parking garage that's internal to the building exceeds the requirement for parking on that, for all the apartments. So we have 450 parking spaces, which is 1.8 per unit, that are inside the building in essence because they won't be visible to anybody driving by. Is there someone here from Green Brick that would, would you like to talk?
If there's any specific questions at some point, I'd be delighted. We're in the new building stage, so.
Yeah, okay. All right. So again, just a little background on Green Brick in the packet here. And here's a couple of photos of their interior, high-end finishes. And some exterior samples of some product that's being built around town right now. And then the Crya Hotels, this is the Hyatt Place footprint and rendering. And a street elevation.
Is there a person from Crya here?
Yes, I'm Nina with Green Hotels. Is there any questions?
What was your name again?
Nina Chudusama.
Thank you.
And then with respect to drainage, we are looking at an approximate three-quarter acre, two-acre detention area. And Bury is here to answer any specific questions of that. The intention here is to create the retain, the detention area that would keep the water from flowing into the creek during major storms. And the idea here is this area is going to be fenced and highly landscaped, so it's not an eyesore to anybody living in the community here adjacent to the property. And so they'll be here to, they are here to answer questions relative to the specifics of any, anything that you may have in that area. This is a photo of a detention area in another part of town that is similar to what we're talking about. I would say that we're going to be much more landscaped than just trees around here to hide the pond itself or the area itself. So with that, we'll begin a question-answer session. Oh, hang on. One second. Sorry. Let me introduce Bill Dahlstrom.
Bill Dahlstrom, Mayor, Council, thank you very much for the opportunity to come forward tonight. We'd like to thank the town staff for helping us through this process. A lot of work has been done and we appreciate the attention to detail and the Planning and Zoning Commission's attention to detail as well. Spent a lot of time there. We received a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission on the plan development modifications. There was one recommendation that we wanted to clarify. After our design team had a chance to look at it, we thought there might be a better way of handling it. And the recommendation was to put gates at both ends of the townhouse street. And the whole idea there was for, was to deter traffic, traffic moving, coming in off of 114 and going down that street, realizing they can't cut through, turn around, and coming back out. So the idea of a gate came up. We have no problems with a traffic deterrent system or method, but we found out that the gate may not be the appropriate tool to use there at that location. So we would prefer, as far as that issue goes, if we would come forward with a traffic deterrent system at the time of site planning or preliminary plat, when we come back to the town for approval of our site plan and preliminary plat, so that we do address the issue of traffic deterrents. We just don't, we don't mandate a gate. The gate may be the right tool to use, right thing to use, we just don't know at this point.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So what we're going to do to help everybody is, we are in the public hearing segment of the building. We thought the presentation would be good for everybody to be able to hear some of those things. So if you'd like to speak during the public hearing section, I do ask you to fill out a card or a piece of paper and hand to Holly and we'll recognize you and entertain your questions, your comments, and see what we have there. What we will be doing is not really answering your questions during the public hearing, but taking your questions. And then when we get to the actual discussion items, we'll deal with those appropriately. And so at this time, we are still just on the amendment to the PD document and not really the hotel special use permit. So if you want to make a comment about the special use permit of the hotel, we'll be back to that in a few minutes after we close the item one in the public hearing. All right. So anybody wish to speak during the public hearing? You can come forward, state your name and address, but we'd appreciate you filling out a sheet of paper for Holly's purposes.
We have Eric Smith, who filled out a.
All right.
Eric Smith, 243 Oak Hill Drive, Trophy Club, Texas. In 2012, PD 30 was approved by a town council. The developer and landowner, Beck Ventures, committed to certain things in his proposal request for the zoning change. It was a mixed-use development with apartments, townhouses, a high-end hotel, and retail. His strategy was for the apartments to house the people that would shop in the retail space, and he stated that the retail would not come without the apartments. The apartments were limited to 250. Retail was on the first floor. Townhouses were limited to 30. A full-service hotel with restaurant and 5,000 square foot of meeting space was committed to. A lake with a Bellagio-type fountain was shown, and a high-end theater like Angelica Theater was talked about. A large segment of the town citizens objected to PD 30 because they did not want the apartments, the additional apartments. The town council approved PD 30 but added one caveat to the zoning change. The council specified that 23,000 to 25,000 square feet of retail space must be built simultaneously with any apartments. Apartments could not be built without retail. The council's rationale for approval was because they felt the town needed the retail tax base, and the mixed development was the proper compromise and the caveat for no apartments before retail was a means to protect the town. In 2014, PD 30 was amended to allow the apartments on the first floor, to be used on the first floor if after two years the retail space remained unoccupied. This would potentially have added 33 additional apartments. The key word is "potentially." Now, with this proposed amendment or zoning change, what do we get? We get two distinct developments, apartments and retail. It's no longer this mixed development. Obviously, now the retail does not need the apartments, or maybe retail will never be built. The potential for 33 apartments was removed. These may or may not have ever been real. It also may have been some number of a subset smaller than 33. The larger apartments are a plus to what they're proposing. The townhouses were increased to 39. Since these are owner-occupied properties, this again is of a benefit. The limited service hotel with no restaurant, less meeting space, is to replace a full-service hotel. Since this is not a high-end hotel with fewer rooms, meeting space, and no restaurant, the town will see less tax revenue than originally promised. The Hyatt Place has had its name used, but to my knowledge, no contract exists with Hyatt. We could end up with another value place. We already have three limited service hotels, and I don't believe we need another. The lake and the fountain are gone. What is proposed is a catch area for rain runoff. This is a place where trash will accumulate, and it will be a place for mosquito breeding grounds as the water stagnates there before being dumped into the creek. No theater, a high-end theater otherwise. Finally, the town is asked to give up the Kiavigot on retail, must be built at the same time as apartments. Why would our town council approve this proposal given less revenue would be generated from the limited service hotel and the lack of commitment on retail? This is our town's last piece of vacant, buildable property for significant retail and additional town revenue. I urge the council to vote for the city of Trophy Club and a development that enhances our community. Not this proposal that cheapens what has been promised and adds tax burden back on the citizens who you were elected to represent and protect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Holly, I don't have an email from anybody else. Anybody else want to speak during the public hearing for this portion? We will take citizen input later as we, as you hear the council ask their questions and we consider those items, just to let you know that. If you want to fill out a speaker's form, you're welcome to do so. All right. We will then move on to item two in our public hearing. Public hearing regarding a request for a specific use permit for a hotel, parentheses, limited service, parentheses, on an approximately 2.075 acre tract located within the PD 30 zoning district, located generally at the northeast corner of Trophy Club Drive and State Highway 114, bordered on the north by Indian Creek Drive and on the east by rear property lines of residential lots located on Brook Hollow Drive, case SUP-16008. So Nina, did you want to make any comments at this time? Please come forward. State your name again and your address, please.
Nina Chudusama, 3517 University Park Lane in Irving, Texas. We are asking for approval to put an upscale select service hotel. We will be putting about 105 rooms, a minimum of 105 rooms on the site. It is a boutique-style upscale hotel. The full-service restaurants in a hotel are really starting to fade away. It's a thing of the past. You rarely see these type of new construction hotels out there in DFW or anywhere. The new direction is more of a boutique-style work-life balance type of hotel. There's still food and beverage offered throughout the day. It's fresh. There's a fully-equipped commercial kitchen in the hotel. It's just not a sit-down dinner, full-service restaurant. I guess I can open up to any questions?
We'll do the questions in that after the public hearing.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Anybody wishing to speak during the public hearing on this item of the special use permit for the hotel? All right. Hearing no one seeking the floor, we will then close the public hearing at 7:29 PM and enter into our special council session. Item number three, consider to take appropriate action regarding an ordinance amending certain designated plan development number 30, PD 30, conditions on an approximately 26.4 acre tract of land located generally at the northeast corner of Trophy Club Drive and State Highway 114, bordered on the north by Indian Creek Drive and on the east by the rear property lines of the residential lots located on Brook Hollow Drive, providing for amendments and providing an effective date. Ron, do you want to update us on where we are on this?
Thank you, Mayor. What you have before you tonight is a set of comprehensive proposed amendments to the PD 30 zoning ordinance. The original PD 30 ordinance was passed in 2012 and was further amended in 2014. So this would mark the second amendment, the original ordinance passed in 2012. In summation, the effect of this amendment proposed by the applicant involves reducing the total multifamily units from 283 to 250 by eliminating the ground-floor retail-ready units. by eliminating the ground floor retail-ready units. Also reducing the overall height of the urban residential down to four stories and eliminating the efficiency units as well. With regard to the townhomes, nine more townhomes are proposed, bringing the total to 39 units. Additional changes include a new site plan, or excuse me, preliminary site plan, which would replace the one that's currently approved and dated March 2014. And on this site plan shows a different configuration of retail and office on the property. The retail is reconfigured to make the sites more marketable. The phasing has been eliminated from the 2014 amendments to allow the retail to be built whenever the, the, the market dictates. However, the applicant is required, the developer, I should say, is required to put the infrastructure and the parking in around the, the pads along 114 before, at the same time that the apartments or the urban residential would be built. Additionally, there is a rowhouse definition that has been added to the regulations, which would require the urban residential along Trophy Club Drive to look like basically brownstones, as mentioned earlier by the applicant. And this would be again for the, the urban residential that would be facing Trophy Club Drive. Additionally, there are some changes to the definition of a hotel adding a limited service hotel to the regulations. And this is contained both in the PD 30 amendments, as further amended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the separate SUP item, which I will get into when we get to that discussion as far as the, the details related to what the P&amp;Z recommended. The site itself is 26.4 acres. It is currently mostly undeveloped. It's not platted. There is an office building at the corner of Indian Creek Drive and Trophy Club Drive. It's about 7,000 square feet. Again, this was built and not platted about several decades ago. So this would be removed and demolished and would make way for the remainder of the development when that time comes in terms of the phasing. In terms of public notification, 39 property owners were notified within 200 feet of the subject property. And to date, we've not received any written correspondence regarding this request. And with regard to the legal notice as well, the published legal notice in the newspaper, as well as the notice that was sent to the property owners within 200 feet, the notice is very specific as to which sections of the ordinance are being amended. And just to remind the council, the, the requests tonight and the amendments that would be authorized to the PD 30 regulations are restricted to those sections of the ordinance that currently governs PD 30 that were actually contained in the actual public notice. Finally, the Planning and Zoning Commission did consider this item on March the 24th, last Thursday, and they did vote to approve the amendments by a vote of four to three, subject to the conditions that are contained in Exhibit B that were sent to you today. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions from the council.
All right. We also have P&amp;Z chairman Dennis Sheridan with us. Dennis, do you wish to add anything in remarks?
No, just.
Thank you, Dennis. Counsel, it is up to you now for questions dealing with this particular issue or comments. So anybody want to start? Somebody? Garrett?
I'd like to make a few comments if I could and address Mr., is it Smith, Eric Smith's comments. Let me first say this. I'm gonna refer to the old council for a minute, back and forth. So when I use the word old council, I want you guys to understand something, that most of us up here, we're not part of that old council. There is one of us up here, our mayor pro tem, that actually was. And we have to give him kudos. He's one of the lone soldiers that fought the good fight against apartments. And I appreciate Greg doing that. He was in the trenches back in the day. I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I think everybody can remember the days when we fought against apartments. So thank you, Greg, for being the champion when you did that. So when I refer to old council, even though Greg was there, I don't want anybody to think that I'm referring to him. Mr. Smith, you're, you're right. We were promised a lot of things. And I'm a retail developer. I understand development. I was one of the voices that spoke loudly when we were told that the apartment buildings would support the retail. That was a falsehood. I knew it wasn't true back then, and I know it's not true today. We were delivered a, a product that was flawed on many different accounts, from the height of the building to the structure of the building, to the way that the retail is developed in here. For example, in the old site plan, you can see that what we were gonna get was a pre-built building that was 30-plus, 40, 60,000 square feet of vacant shell space. I spent a lot of time visiting with people in the brokerage community. I went to CBRE. I went to SRS, which is now Stalbach. I went to Venture. And actually, I went to the annual convention that we have, the ICSC convention. And I actually spoke to the Weisman rep, Weitzman representatives there for two years in a row about this particular project. And my concerns that, one, spec retail would get leased out to a Doc-in-the-Box, you know, if you will, or whomever else would go there. Or that it would just sit vacant for a long time. So one of the things that we did was we agreed that the old site plan didn't work. And we, I shouldn't say we, let me speak specifically me. I knew that retail was not gonna go on the ground floor. I think we all knew that. The old council provided a loophole for the developer. Not one that I wanted to put in. I'm sure if y'all remember me on P&amp;Z, I know you guys do. Y'all remember that night, right? When we, we fought bravely to remove that loophole. Because I knew, at the end of the day, they were gonna lease it for 24 months, and then it was gonna be turned to apartments. It was never gonna be retail. So there's 40,000 square feet that was represented as retail that we knew was never going to be retail. So as we began, began to look at this project, as it came forward, and the developer was preparing to build it, I mean, this was getting ready to be built. They were gonna submit permits, and it was gonna go up. We realized that it was a time for us to sit down and try to create something that would benefit our community. And so what we've done, or what's been done and put before us is an opportunity to push this apartment complex back off of the street. To shrink it down, so it's not so tall when you come into town. And to create an environment where retailers can actually put together what they want. And our long-term hope and plan, and I understand it's a hope and it's a plan, but I think it's based on sound logic. And it's logic that I've gone out in the community and researched. I think we'll find that we'll get retailers that specifically want to be here and want specific types of buildings will now be able to come in and place themselves in a complex that has some green space and walking-around area. And hopefully, with what we've seen coming up in Trophy Club, there's some restaurants are now beginning to come in here. And we would really like to see some restaurant space in there sprinkled in with the retail. So what I believe is, we've separated the, we separated the office from the retail. We kind of put that office up in the front corner, and we brought that retail out to the street where it could be successful. And we've given the, the market the opportunity to drive what it is, whether it's restaurants or specific retail. We've also, I think we've created a situation that makes the apartments a little bit more friendly. Mike talked about that, where they look more like brownstones, more walk-up. One of the concerns I had, if you look at the old site plan, is along Trophy Club Drive, you literally had two parking spaces. Was it four stories? Five-story, four-story, five-story tall building that ran along it. I don't want that when I drive into Trophy Club. That's not the town I want to drive into. What we have now is we've shrunk this building down to four stories. And we've created a sawtooth environment where there's little pocket parks. So as you're driving down the street, it feels a little bit more comfortable. So I think we've softened. Go ahead.
It's three stories right along Trophy Club Drive.
Three, three stories, yeah. But you can see the, the parking garage is how tall? Four stories. So you have a parking garage that sticks up out of the top of it. Now you won't see the parking garage, but it softens it. So I, I believe, I understand your concerns. I, I was a frustrated P&amp;Z member. I was a frustrated citizen. But I believe, as a developer and as sitting down, that this project has a chance to make it. I really do. I believe that the retail has a chance to thrive in this. I've never believed that the retail would have a chance to thrive in the other, in the other plan. And I never believed that that project was gonna come out like it did. I think that the old council was misled. I think that a lot of the things that were talked about never had a chance to make. And I think a lot of us spoke up, and a lot of us recognized that. But we were not heard by the group of people that sat up here before. So those are my general comments. I don't know if I went off topic there, Nick, but.
You're fine.
I think that addressed it. I know we're gonna talk a little bit about the hotel later, and we can address your concerns there, and I'll address some of my concerns as well.
All right. Anybody else? I have several questions, but anybody else? Tim?
Mike, this question is for you. And for our edification. We realized in 2014, most of us up here, was that once the, the retail-ready came on board, that actually helped kick off the project because that meant they could be apartments. Before it was retail, they might never have gotten built, right? You, you might have said, we don't want to be in that business. Who knows? You know what I mean? You might not. But once retail-ready came in, that was the, that was the phrase that gave you the out. And, and I, I think you're putting a great product together now. I want everybody to know they've been real amenable to the changes that we wanted. But I, I'd like everyone to know that the, the 214 amendment stated that you had 24 months from building permit. And then you could turn the retail into apartments. From building permit to opening takes about how long? So once you're issued a building permit, how long will it take you to build?
24 months.
So, so in actuality, honestly, there was never really going to be retail unless it was, unless it was rented. I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna advertise it, but if it's not there, you can almost change it to residential immediately. So then we, we get all the residential on the first floor. So the changes you're making are actually helping us and helping you at the same time, I guess is what we're trying to say.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because a lot of people don't understand that. They think retail-ready means the retail's gonna be there, it's gonna be heavily marketed, you're gonna sit on it for a long period of time, and then at, you know, last-ditch effort, you'll change it to apartments. That's really not the case.
That's, that's right.
Okay. All right.
And, and one thing I would like to add is that the, the retail on the first floor of the mixed-use building, we'll call it,
Right.
was approximately 75,000 feet. So there was only 25,000 feet in Lot A that would have to be built at the same time. That's really what we're giving up here, is 25,000 square feet of retail.
Oh, I, I agree with that. I, I think, you know, building a spec building does not mean people will move into it. So to, to have it pad-ready, I, I believe is, is much better.
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Greg, head us hand up, and then Jim.
Just want to correct the record. I was not on the council in 2012. What I did, though, we, leading the way to get the residents to sign a petition and get them to listen to us, and they did not. But I was here for 2014, and I did vote against that. And I will be voting against it tonight. I've got some questions, but I'll defer to everybody else and see if they got better ones.
Jim?
Yes. Chase, you may be the one, or Mike, I'm not sure exactly who could answer this. But there's still the perception, based on what was said last Thursday night at P&amp;Z, by the deletion of what's been referred to as phasing, that we take two years to build our apartment structure. We have these new pad sites, which are a big improvement over the strip design that we originally had. But there's still a concern that, yeah, you're gonna go ahead and get your apartment complex built, and you'll start leasing apartments. But how much effort is gonna genuinely be made to take those pad sites and make them retail sites? And residents are still concerned that what may happen is that two years into it, you come along and say, you know, we've really tried to go ahead and, and make these retail or restaurants, but it's just not working out. The market just isn't headed that way, and the only thing to do with this is make more apartments. And that's a concern that's, that's going on in people's minds, and I've gotten calls and emails to that very point. And I'm just wondering, is there, based on the comments you made Thursday night about your, your feeling that this is gonna be retail, and you were very, you know, committed to that happening, why you couldn't put something in this amendment that would put those fears aside? Something to the extent that we won't lease the first apartment unless we have 50% of our retail going vertical? Or something to that effect, where you have contracts to develop retail? So the people now know this is not gonna wind up as additional apartments, that these 250 are gonna be it, and the rest of it's gonna be something other than more apartments. Have you given that any thought?
Yes, 100%. And I thank you for your comments. I'm gonna try to address all of them. I'll flip back up here to the proposed site plan. And, and yes, you're correct that, that there's not a commitment to lease the retail space. However, there is a commitment in the amended PD that we've requested that there's a commitment that we will build the infrastructure necessary to build the retail here. The piece that we're selling to Mr. Pacilio is limited, if you can see the cursor here, to this piece right here. Yet we're going to go ahead and build all of the infrastructure on the whole property. We're gonna grade the whole site. We're gonna build all the roads. So with the proceeds we would get from this, we will be actually expending all the money to build all of the pad sites for this piece already. All the capital that we're getting is being plowed right back into the project. It would be imprudent for me, as the chief financial officer of the company, to say, let's expend the capital on this if we don't think that we're gonna go ahead and build this as quickly as possible. To Garrett's point, we also have met with the Weitzman Group at ICSC in Las Vegas. They are the retail broker that we are gonna use for this whole project. The Weitzman Group, you've probably seen their W's on all their signs all across Texas. They're in Austin, Waco, Dallas, Fort Worth. The Weitzman Group is very, very bullish on this site for retail. And in fact, when we were at ICSC, if you had visited their booth, the site plan was very prominently displayed on their booth. So when we get proceeds from the multifamily, as well as the hotel, as well as the townhomes, the concept for us, this piece right here is already built. At some point, we would like to demolish this and build what has, has been approved, but it's already built and leased. But the idea here right now is that we're gonna come in, and in one fell swoop, we're going to build all the infrastructure for the whole site, and that simultaneously, the apartments, the hotel, and the townhomes will all be constructed simultaneously. And if we time it right, it will all be open simultaneously as well. The retail pieces don't take as long to build. The apartments and the hotel and the multifam, or the townhomes will all take up to 24 months to build. The retail pieces should be much quicker. With that being said, as Garrett kind of alluded to, and, and kind of coming back to Mr. Smith's point, yes, in the old plan, we've taken out this lagoon. But we have not, and it's a lagoon, and the lagoon, it stinks. It's, it's standing water, you know, unless you have a fountain. We have not replaced the lagoon with a mosquito farm, for sure. That is not our intent. The drainage requirements for this, for this size of acreage requires that we're going to have to forego some of our property. So there'll be a detention facility here. As Josh with Burey will talk about later, the detention facility is intended to be a dry detention facility. I can get into more specifics about the detention facility. It's basically gonna be hidden camouflage. You won't ever know it's there. It's going to be dry. It is not a mosquito farm under any circumstance, but it will be hidden. Replacing the lagoon, as our architect, Mike Twitchell, is here to say, when we move the retail that was on this side of the multifamily, we've created a lot more retail space. This was originally 38,300 square feet of retail. This is now 60,000 square feet of retail. Retail leasing on this side of a multifamily away from the freeway would be very, very hard to, to lease, especially if this hadn't leased up already. But now we're going to have retail all right here. And as you can see, and as, as our architect, Mike Twitchell, can allude to, the space in here, this is, this is 60 feet of green space in front of the retail. And what we believe will happen with more retail, if you look at the old plan, this was a strip center here that basically we would have to come in and say, hey, take the space we have. That's all you can do. But with this space, we can take this piece and say, hey, do you want to have a, a restaurant with an awesome patio? Well, you can have this whole space. You can make an L-shaped space right here. And what we believe will happen is that someone will come in and look at these spaces and be as excited about this project as we are. And we'll see that we've got all of this green space on this side, which is undetermined. We could put ponds, fountains, who knows what we could put in here. But this would be. But this would be a way for the retail to engage with the multifamily and the front of the hotel, and it's got a direct line of sight right here through the clock tower, too. So, we believe that this will be ultimately a focal point of this development, and we think that this makes this actually a superior plan to what was previously approved. So, effectively, the plan has been to move more retail this way, and a commitment to us to expend our capital to get the retail pad-ready and ready to go. And for us, it's going to be pad-ready, ready to go. We need to turn that into income-generating property, so the onus is on us to try to get that leased up. We're not selling this piece to Mr. Pacilio's team, so I would suspect that there's a 0% chance that this would ever be sold to put apartments on 114. We want this to be the gateway to the project.
With that in mind, just for the public's benefit, because again, this is a concern.
Yes.
With that, those kind of feelings that you've just expressed, and the zero chance this, and all that other thing, can you put something in the document that will tell the people, "You cannot, will not repurpose that infrastructure and build apartments on those retail sites ever," that they will be retail?
Well, they'd be zoned tonight, so they would have to come back for rezoning if they were going to put apartments.
I'm just trying to get a simple statement out in the open to see if people would at least hear that, that they know it's not going to be more apartments.
I'm an accountant. I'm sorry, I'm not a lawyer, but I believe what the mayor said is correct, that we would have to come back and reapply to do that, and that is not our intention. Our intention is to make this retail. We are building infrastructure. We're building all of these roads all the way through here. We've already agreed with the mud to put all of the utilities and water all the way through here to bring the utilities necessary for this. So, again, I think it's very, very unlikely that we would make that, excuse me, multifamily there at all.
All right. So, I had some questions and comments, and then Ryland had his hand up, so just to make sure I get everybody that's wanting to do that. I wanted to make a statement, much like Garrett did at first, but I'm going to go back slightly on a different angle. When I became mayor and with the newer council, we worked very hard to negotiate with the Beck's on something different. And to their credit, both Jeff and Scott met with us on numerous occasions, and our offer, or our pressure was, "You take apartments out, we'll see what we can do about Town Center." And we went through that negotiations for a period of months, and in fact, Beck submitted plans to P&amp;Z in the night before that was going to be considered. That was pulled. So, none of us up here, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody on council, wanted to have apartments, and we would have preferred to somehow do something different. That has gone away at this point, and the market is, something's going to happen with apartments, and so, how do we make lemonade out of the lemons maybe that we were dealt? So, that's what we're trying to work through, I believe. I have a couple of questions, and whoever can answer this, I'd appreciate. On the plan that you have on the screen at this time, in between the apartments and the retail area, in the middle of that parking area is a square. What does that square indicate? Do you see where I'm talking about? Is it just a square or nothing?
Yeah, are you referencing this little square right there?
Right there, yep. Well, there's a white square in the middle of that.
That's right. So, the white square right there, that is undetermined right now. If you, if your eyes are much better than my old eyes, I believe it actually says pavilion on there.
It does, yep.
And while it could, if this layout holds like we think, you know, that would be a great place for pavilion or some kind of gathering place. It's undetermined because the retail and the market for the retail will drive the exact configuration, but the idea is that that will be green space there, and that some kind of interesting feature and focal point, like a pavilion or something along the lines of a statue or something like that, could potentially be put in there as an interesting focal point.
Okay, so I was also talking about, just to the right of that, is another little white square with no label in it. Just an architectural white square?
Yes.
Nothing specific, okay. So, Mike said in his opening presentation, relocate the clock tower.
Yes.
So, have you picked a place for that? Is there a plan for that, or is this just...?
The clock tower, as we understand it, is a very, very important piece of the town's culture, and there's, I think, mixed emotions amongst, from what we've heard from the town about the existence of the clock tower. So, at this time, the clock tower could stay where it currently is, or it could be relocated, or it could stay where it is and be recovered in a way that would match the existing architecture of what is ultimately built. There is no decision at this exact time as to what we would do with the clock tower.
All right, thank you. So, my next question is, as you were working on this plan, prior to this current version, it was thought that the hotel would go along 114?
Correct.
What was the decision process to move the hotel internal and make a office retail on Block C, or Building C, or whatever it is?
And I might defer to my architect here. I think part of it was that a hotel generates generally a lot of traffic and a lot of interest in its location, and we thought that by having the hotel all the way down here, it kind of detached it from everything, whereas by spinning it this way and having it face all of, if I could say, the action, if you will, we thought that that would be a better site for the hotel. Mike, am I incorrect there, or do you want to...?
I'm Mike Twitchell, 3624 Oklaun Avenue in Dallas, Texas. I was the original architect, and we came up with this plan also. One thing that was pretty apparent, and Mr. Reed kind of implied it, is that retail leases better when it's got great visibility, and the best visibility is off 114. So, if you see the retail, and people live off their signs, they can see that from 114, we can lease it so much easier. I think Mr. Reed would agree to that. That's kind of what prompted where the retail is here. Everything is visible from 114.
All right.
Retailers like that, and that's one reason the other building right there is facing 114. The hotel happens to be a destination spot, so it doesn't need real good access from 114. Access, yes, but visibility, no. So, that's the reason the hotel came in the back.
All right, appreciate that input. The other question that I have is, in the approved concept plan,
Yes.
Had a road through the middle with what I'm going to call roundabouts. If you want to go back a couple of slides, you'll see that. So, that kind of feature's gone, along with a green space that's kind of in the middle. It's a little hard to see, but kind of bluish, which maybe was a lagoon or whatever that was going to be.
Correct.
And this was sold to the town, as the citizens talking about, in fact, Scott got up and talked about this, little sailboats out there, whatever might be there, as an amenity to make this more palatable, might be one way of looking at it, to have apartments. I understand what you've told us thus far, but it seems like to me that you've scattered green space around, and maybe there's some loss there. So, any concept comments that you want to make about that? I don't know why we lost the picture, but it'll come back, okay?
Yes, absolutely. So, in the old plan, yes, we did have a lagoon feature here. When the water studies came back, the lagoon feature would be unable to be used for detention or retention for water runoff, so there would have to be another space for detention or retention somewhere else on the property. In addition, in the original plan, there was the concept of a six-story office building that would go right here, and the hotel would be right here. In order to meet the parking needs of the office building, dare I say, since I didn't draw the plan, there would be this eyesore of a parking lot that would be a four-story structured parking garage that would be facing all of the residential townhomes right here. And from this parking garage, as someone in the P&amp;Z meeting referenced, you could stand on the parking garage here and look into all of the backyards in Hogan's Glen here. So, our feeling was that by removing the office, the six-story office, and the large parking structure, it enabled us to reconfigure the site plan to something that was a little bit more engaging. And the lagoon, which is really unusable unless you are someone who actually has a motorized sailboat or something of the like, could be much more functional. If you look here, there is substantially zero place for gathering here unless someone builds a patio in these retail facilities. And there's no place to gather here unless you are probably staying at this hotel. In this, I contrast that with this plan here, where there's a lot more green space all the way around. As a former sailor myself, I love water, and I love a water feature. The problem is that there's not an ideal space to put a water feature here in the plan and still meet the needs of a hotel and the retail that we'd have here.
All right, thank you. I had two other things, but I'll hold them. At some point, I'd like to hear more about detention, so if somebody else gets to that point, I want more detailed explanation about that. Ryland had his hand up, and Garrett wants to talk, so, and Greg and Jim all have their hand up, okay?
I'll let Garrett go, because I think he wanted to respond to something specific there.
Go ahead, Garrett.
Yeah, I just want to respond back to what you said, Nick, and if, do you mind flipping back to the other site plan? I want to talk about a fundamental flaw, not a fundamental, it's just flawed, flat-out flawed, in the previous site plan, right there.
Okay.
So, this was sold to us as the gathering place around this lagoon. And it was sold to us that there was going to be shops, and this is where we were going to hang out. We'll realize that building, it's hard to see on here, 4B, 5B, 6B, all of those, that big building in the middle, that's all apartments. There's no retail there. It's a fairy tale. That's all apartments. So, what you have is you have a giant apartment building in the middle with the hotel over here, an office building over here, and a water feature in the middle. And we're supposed to come in Trophy Club and shop and enjoy it. Well, where we're going to shop is this long, straight Building A here, with parking that goes into it. You're just going to pull up like you do in the Tom Thumb parking lot and walk in, or you're going to drive around back to these two? Now, flip back over to the other plan. I love the water feature, but nobody's ever going to walk over there unless you're at the hotel. If you look at the new plan, what's been created now is these way more pedestrian-friendly blocks out front. You move the hotel away from everything. You have the apartments moved over, but now you have 60 feet of green space. You have places where kids can walk around, moms can shop, you can pull in. It's actually a more pedestrian-friendly inviting environment than the other one. The other environment, once you got rid of the ground-floor retail, and it was a cold, large apartment building, it really, you know, some people call this the Jewel Trophy Club. If you go look back to that other site plan, you realize that what you have is a giant apartment building surrounded by a lagoon and a hotel and a strip of retail. You know, shame on the last council for approving that. That's all I'd say.
All right, so Ryland, and then Greg, and then Jim.
Yeah, we've been here an hour, and I haven't said anything yet. I think that's a record. Garrett's initial comments were really spot-on, and I have to say, I appreciate the comments from Mr. Smith and from others, because I've been out there myself, two years ago, while I was running as a candidate, I spoke to the council about the concept of retail ready and allowing that in, and even though I knew they would end up favoring it, I told them, "This probably guarantees that, come hell or high water, an apartment complex will be built here on this particular parcel, and everything else at this point is speculative." So, I'm happy to be able to, and I was limited to my four minutes, so I understand. I know it's tough sometimes, but I'm happy now to be able to expound a little bit. That leads me to one of the things that Mr. Smith said that I wanted to, that I wanted to build on, and it was, he was concerned about a lack of commitment on the retail. And I completely understand that. I think that that is, that's the, of everyone that's had, that's had some concerns about this, that's probably been their number-one thing. The issue is that I don't feel that the old way, where it was locked in with a simultaneous construction of another structure, is a reasonable way to do it, and the reason being is that you can't make a tenant lease. And you create almost an adverse market condition by introducing a vacant space that hasn't had, that already hasn't had a natural market identified for it. Governments make mistakes a lot of times when they try to plan too much. We, as a government, can't make people lease. We cannot make people do business. We cannot force commercial activity in our town, but we can create adverse conditions that screw up the free market. And anyone who's talked to me for more than five minutes knows that, for me, the free market is paramount. So, that is why I think the shift here to move all of the commercial towards the frontage, go to a more build-to-suit strategy, is the best-case scenario for attracting the highest use of the commercial properties. Now, I talked about what government can't do. What we can do is we can be pretty specific about land use, and that's really one of the main things we're looking at tonight. When you guys look at this site plan, one of the main things we're looking at is there's 26 acres of land, there's buildings that are planned to be in certain places, and they have certain allowed uses. And the proposal from the developer and from some of the other principals here are proposing that these would be the uses. So, to Mr. Perro's concern, the zoning locks in the use of commercial sites, for lack of a better word, pads here, as commercial. So, it would require an entire revisitation of this process that's just happened now, which means another pass-through P&amp;Z and another pass-through council to modify those uses. So, if anyone has concerns, and they are valid, I've heard people say the same thing. What's to keep them from deciding, "Man, these apartments are renting like gangbusters. Let's build more"? That's a land use thing. We can very effectively dictate the type of land use. I mean, that's why the land use of allowing multifamily was so important to the developer, to the landowner in the initial request four years ago, was because that's a huge financial opportunity for them, and there's a huge demand in this market. It was granted. People have expressed their opinion as to the unfortunate nature of that. People didn't like it in town. I'm not going to cheerlead it. I don't want apartments either. But the land use has been granted to the private property owner, and now we have, I believe, some changes here in front of us that significantly improve the aesthetics, the feel, lowers the density, puts all of the commercial property in a better position than it was in before to succeed and get higher-quality tenants. And as someone who has some ability to influence this, while understanding we cannot create a market for commercial, we can try to create better conditions, and so, I think that in terms of front retail there, we're definitely headed in the right direction. The only other thing I would caution everyone as we go through, because we're obviously going to get into some deep details here as we go along, is, I, like Garrett and like many others, believe that some of the initial premises from 2012 were flawed. So, when we talk about how something was sold before, let's not try to match the previous sell job, because the salesman failed, basically. It didn't work. That's why we're all here tonight, hoping to make for a more mutually beneficial environment for development here of this development. So, maybe we can take some kernels from those sell points and try to carry them forward, like the green space discussion we just had, and I actually agreed with Chase in that there's significantly more circulation space here, more space between buildings, more buffer between curb and building, and curb and structure in this than there were before, and I think that's a tremendous... And I think that's a tremendous help all the way along. So when we talk about how something was sold, I would just caution everyone to remember that we need to find a new way to achieve the goal and not necessarily worry about the sell point. That's all I have for now. Thanks, guys.
Greg?
Just to make sure, this is a preliminary site plan. It's not a concept plan, right? So it might be some minor changes. So I got a couple of questions. The interior townhomes, what kind of privacy will they have in their backyard compared to the parking lots and the hotel?
Kendall, do you want to answer that or talk to it? You want to come forward so we get it on tape? Thank you, Kendall.
Carter, Kendall, Green Brick Partners, 1241 Navajo Trail, Richardson, Texas. We're in discussions with the owners about screening wall and going through this process. Do you want to chime in on that?
Yeah, no, absolutely. The concept is that there will be a, when the sale to the townhome acquirer is complete, that this whole block, all the way around here, including a little pocket park here, will be acquired by the townhome developer and that there will be a screening wall back here that's landscaped and camouflaged that will separate the townhomes from the hotel.
All right. Thank you.
I gather they'll be fenced in.
I'm sorry?
They'll be fences, be fenced in.
I assume, yes.
Are they two-car garages?
Yes, they are.
Side by side?
Correct.
All right. Now, when you do come back with this, does this go back to P and Z and then back to us, the site plan for the townhomes?
The way it's currently proposed, if the PD amendments are approved as presented tonight, then they would need to bring a site plan back. And the plat would require approval by the P and Z and council. The site plan, however, would not.
So they could build, so we have no say in what type of townhomes they're going to build as far as garage doors and roof lines?
Other than what's already contained in the ordinance and the specific provisions in the PD 30 ordinance, there would be no further regulation of the aesthetic or zoning requirements related to the townhomes. From there, the building code would then take it in terms of construction type and standards.
And I just got one more crazy question over the apartments. Where the garage is, I believe it's three apartments. It's not one giant one, right? North of the gray area, the garage, you have three units that come out, that stick out?
Yes. Those are brownstone-type units.
How do you, how do you get access to that? Like you have a walk-around on all the other apartments. You can get to the one on the left, but the two, the one in the middle and one on the right, how would you get to that?
There will be a, there will be a hallway, a breezeway behind it, between the garage and the building itself. And the brownstones will have direct access at ground level like a single-family home does facing the street.
I understand the ground level, but to park the car. So in other words, those two units will have access directly from the garage where the others have a walk-around hallway?
Correct. There's hallways around the entire interior.
But not for those two apartments?
There will be a hallway behind their home as well. So they can access the garage directly through that hallway, or they can go directly to the outside without going into the hallway.
I think the best way to describe what Mr. Pacilio was stating is that there is a front entrance, like a front door, a long Trophy Club drive, and then there would be a back door, so to speak, from a hallway that would enter, that would take you to the garage, correct?
Correct.
All right. Jim?
Yeah, just two quick points. You've shown some nice photographs here of what the concept is for the townhomes. And I'm just wondering how similar would those photographs be or those drawings be to what you intend to put into the apartment complexes? We talked about them being upscale, granite counters, wood floors and so on. Would that be representative for the apartments as well as the townhomes?
Let me go back to his photos. Ours may be better, I'm not sure. I got to look at his photo.
Oh, okay. I'm just trying to get a little clarification.
Yeah, no, this one's, this starts here. Are you talking to interior, Jim?
Yeah, I'm just curious. When you say they're going to be upscale, does that represent what you have in mind for these apartments that you're going to be building?
I'm looking, there's lots of similarities. There'd be, you know, the open rail concept at an upper level, stairs going up. This looks like real wood floors. Ours may be manufactured wood. There's ceramic that looks like wood. There's also vinyl that looks like wood. So there's three different options that may, we've not selected that yet, but that's, all those are a possibility. That hood that's in there, over the range, looks like it might be copper. That's probably out of the price range for what renters would pay there. But, but you know, in general, looking at the trim, it's painted white, baseboards and doors. That's exactly what we'll be doing. The can lights, we use an LED light that would look very similar to that. So yeah, there's, there's a lot of similarities.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of get that out there in the open in case people are curious.
Kitchen fixtures and bathroom fixtures like granite.
Stainless steel, yeah, stainless steel appliances that I see in the background there would be very similar.
Granite counters.
And it looks like they've got granite countertops, all that, yes.
Okay. And the next question, this is maybe more for Chase because he brought this up in his love for the water, being a sailor-type person. We know the Bellagio Fountain was just a carrot put out there to make this complex look like more than it could possibly be. But with this extra green space that you've built into the retail section where the pavilion pad is located and that other little mystery square is shown on the, on the plan, has any thought been given? Because I've been to a lot of different cities in Europe, in Italy, in Switzerland, in France, and a lot of these little, small towns have a lot of water features where the people gather. There's a very relaxing feature that water and the sound and the water itself, it makes people feel good. Has any thought been given to possibly putting in some kind of a appropriate-sized fountain in that pavilion area so when people come out with a lunch or a little table from one of the restaurants that they can sit out there and enjoy the sound, enjoy the sights and have, you know, a nice meal with a water feature in the background?
Sure. So let me try to address the, that by first talking about the lagoon. The lagoon that was previously here takes actually a tremendous amount of acreage to fill up a lagoon like that. It takes a lot of runoff to keep it full. And then to the extent that there's a drought, you have to refill the lagoon. And then you have to circulate it. It can be a very problematic feature, which was one of the, one of the benefits of taking it away. With respect to the area that's still kind of highlighted here, I lost my mouse. Yeah, we want to make this nice. So, yeah, I would defer to Mike to tell us what exactly we could put here. Certainly there could be fountains and things like that. I can't imagine that it would be a, something where you could swim in it or wade in it and feed ducks in it.
No, 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 no.
But if you, if you think about like North Park Mall in Dallas, you know, they actually have water features inside the mall where turtles live and they have goldfish and koi. You know, I could easily foresee something like that being there. You know, again, we first need to find who's going to lease this space. And then they want a patio that faces, you know, a fountain. I mean, that's absolutely on the table. I mean, we want it to be nice and we, in order to drive the rents that we think we can get there, we definitely want to make it a nice feature for people to come and to congregate.
Maybe they could write a song about our people throwing coins in.
Right.
All right.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ryland wanted to talk?
Yes, sir. I actually have a thought about the townhomes that builds upon what Mr. Lamont had. But first, real quick on Jim's thought, I think, I think we're, I think we're hearing that there's some synergy there in terms of, in terms of a vision for something there that's going to, that's going to come out of those four pads. But I would caution that we be careful not to try to put any specific conditions on something that micro at this level because what those are going to be is curbed in and to where the pavement ends and then the rest of that's going to be pad. And so the hope, really our best hope, what we should really, really hope for is that some amazing restaurant comes in there and says, I want to build right there. And they're going to want to say on how their patrons interact with the outdoors as well. So I think that there's a, I think there's a common vision, but I just want to be careful from our perspective that, that we don't get too caught up in trying to, in trying to put conditions on there that are, that are too micro at this point.
It was just a broad statement.
Yeah, I knew you were for sure, but I didn't want anyone else to.
Not the Fountain de Trevi or anything.
Get some crazy ideas. Anyway, townhomes. Greg brought up a good, a good thought about townhomes in terms of site plan. And this was something that I actually came in here tonight. I'll wait till he can hear me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I actually came in here, I actually came in here tonight wanting to float this out to you guys relative to the townhomes. Townhomes, shared wall or, you know, touching structures, whatever you want to call it, townhomes, haven't been built in Trophy Club really ever. We've got some duplex-style ones, but this particular type of residential is new to Trophy Club. And what I would wonder if you guys were amenable to is just this particular portion of the development. Because Greg asked about site plan and the situation with the current, or the site plan approval process. The situation with the current PD, for those of you who don't know, is that the way it was set up was that the normal approval process of a site plan, which is one of the last things that happens before a builder pulls a permit, is it goes to P and Z and it goes to council for approval. And a lot of things come up in there that are very minutiae, but they can be very important for surrounding property owners. They have to do with things like lighting, screening, circulation, things of that nature. And that's not in this PD. And I would, I would like to know if you guys would think it would be okay to put that back in just for the townhome portion so that our residents and our experts on P and Z and our staff with interaction with council have the opportunity in a public forum to have some of those discussions about how will these be screened? How will they be screened from the creek side? Because we have residential on the other end. How will circulation work in the driveway? It's an all-new use for Trophy Club in a way. And so I would feel pretty comfortable, and my, my townhome builder's nodding his head, I think he gets where I'm going with this. So I know that's, that's an ask from us, but I'd like to hear what y'all think about that.
All right. You want to respond?
I think my first comment would be, and then I might defer either to Carter or to Bill, is that the, my recollection, Bill, please correct if I'm wrong, was that the only thing we actually asked for on the townhomes was just increase them because the townhome developer thought that the lots needed to be wider and therefore we couldn't get the amount of lots that they wanted with it. So I think that's the only thing we were asking to change on the PD. So I'm not sure if you're, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand your question exactly because we're not asking to change the PD with respect to the design of the townhomes or, you know, two-car garage, one-car garage. We're trying to, we're trying to not only meet the minimum requirements, we believe that their, their plan is to exceed the minimum requirements. So I'm not sure, I fully understand your question, other than to say that we were only asking to increase the number of townhomes and that was it. Because we think that, they think that they can build a better townhome product.
And I'm with you on that and I agree. We're on the same page on that. My question is, are you guys okay with asking us, because you have to ask, I don't think I can ask you, to, to allow that development to go through its own specific site plan approval? Reason being that the PD addresses everything you just mentioned and that's perfect. There's no, there's nothing there really to, to be looked at at site plan. But there, I feel like we may be missing a little bit with how it interacts with adjacent uses. And the screening question came up. And so I thought, is there, is there a mutual benefit there where we, where we get a little bit of comfort on both sides?
I don't, I don't think it, yeah, and I don't think it talks about the wall, you know.
Right. That's not currently in the PD, so.
My, my only comment to that is that, is that, is that we're kind of ready to go. They're, they're kind of ready to go. And that adding an additional step could delay the process. But, you know, we want to deliver against something that you guys would like. I mean, I think we would prefer not to have to go through an additional step, but if that's something that you guys would require, I guess we could do that. Bill, maybe you can elaborate more on that.
I think Chase has really addressed the issue, Mr. Perro, that our only request on the townhomes was going from 30 to 39. All the other development standards, construction standards, materials, all that are already in.
Right. Just so you clarify, so you, I think you may not understand exactly what I'm asking. Under a normal site plan review, we would not be, you would not be subject to approval for construction standards or any of those things. I don't know if maybe someone who's, who understands, who is with staff or whoever wants to explain that. But, but a site plan review really from a public standpoint really only hits to the public impact to adjacent uses. And that's not really addressed in the PD at a very micro level. And sometimes there are little things that come up, like screening walls, that might have a significant impact on the value of the property and the value of the adjacent property. And those are things that are handled at site plan. I just think I see a little, a little window there where we might, we might want to fill a gap. I in no way want to subject you guys to having to re-approve anything that's in the PD. That's not what a site plan approval does. Site plan approval simply checks for, checks for, what's the right word? Compliance with what's already there for starters and then there's some, some other things, so.
Could we confer with that?
Yeah. It doesn't have to be addressed immediately. This is something that I, this is my first chance to ask this question.
First time we've.
I would have asked y'all last Thursday, but I would have gotten in trouble for it, so.
All right. So I have several people that wanted to speak. I have Jim that wanted to speak and.
Well, mine was on that.
You was on his point?
Right.
Jim, were you on Ryland's point or?
All right. Let Phillip go first.
So Phillip, if you want to talk.
Well, my, my question is if we, if we don't have the site plan, how do we deal with that wall? Because they're actually, they're actually requesting additional units. They're changing this plan. So either we deal with it tonight or they're agreeable to go through that process. So either way, we need to address that. Because the document doesn't require that. So if we approve this, that means they can build it without a wall at that point. So I think either we deal with it tonight or we, or they agree to go through the site plan type situation.
All right. So Dennis wanted to say something that might be related to that, but I'm going to ask Jim.
I'll let Dennis speak if it's related to the same topic.
Is it related to that, Dennis, that you wanted to comment?
Townhomes, sure.
Yeah, okay. Come forward then.
Please.
Dennis Sheridan, One Hill Crest Court. The townhomes, as approved, was discussed as having, we're going to use the word articulated, where we had some separation in the fronts. And if I'm not mistaken, at the P and Z meeting and also council, the way that was handled was on the site plan. It's not in the PD. I just, look, I'm subject to, somebody corrected me. But to have some articulation, it's on the original site plan approved. It's not on here. So as far as if you wanted to, some of the designs, criteria that may have been thought of would be on the site, would be shown on the site plan and not in the PD. That's what I wanted to say, sir.
All right. Ron, any, Ron Ruthland, any comments? Or you don't have to comment, I'm just giving you a chance.
Chairman Sheridan is correct in that there are no specific articulation standards in the PD 30 regulations themselves. But on the 2014 site plan, it did show offsets and articulation in the lots to suggest that that would be done by the buildings when they were constructed.
All right. Jim, Perro, you got your hand up.
Okay, yes. This is a question for Nina on the hotel. This was brought up at the P and Z meeting last Thursday, but I wanted to just go over it again. We're looking at a reduction from 5,000 square feet down to 2,000 square feet.
That's correct.
And 2,000 square feet is not a whole lot bigger than the room we're sitting in now. Somewhat bigger, but not a whole lot. This community does not have a lot of meeting space available. And it just seems that we're looking at a golden opportunity here for weddings, bar mitzvahs, kinsenieras, you name it, for providing a public space in this development that we don't have in this town today. And instead of building what we can use, we're taking it away and coming up with a big closet. And it just seems to me like, you know, we're passing up on a great opportunity to put something in the town that the town really needs. Why? taking it away and coming up with a big closet. And it, it just seems to me like, you know, we're, we're passing up on a great opportunity to put something in the town that the town really needs. Why did we reduce it 3,000 square feet?
So what's driving our reasoning behind that is, um, basically the return on that square footage. So if you take a 300 square foot room, for example, you're earning about 35 to 40,000 a unit per year in revenue, taxable revenue. On 5,000 square feet of meeting space, you might gain 30,000 in revenue in the entire year for the entire 5,000 square feet. If I'm not mistaken, meeting revenue is not city taxable either. I don't know if anybody could speak to that, but I think it's only subject to state tax. Um, so again, the town would be losing out on taxable revenue by us expanding the meeting space.
My question is not so much for the tax revenue for that extra space, it's for the people to have someplace to do what they want to do that they don't have today.
I think in theory, that may be true. In actuality, practically speaking, the spaces that we have that are larger spaces, they just aren't utilized as much. The weddings and the bar mitzvahs, they're, they're rare. They're not very often, um, in, in these areas.
But in those places, are there alternative places to have those events that you didn't get to use because they went someplace else that had a nicer room?
Yes, possibly within, you know, 10 to 15 miles. Um, and we get the sleeping rooms, of course, from that. Um, but within hotels, we just don't see the return on those larger, uh, meeting spaces. We do want the 2,000 square feet allows us to have corporate meetings, which brings sleeping rooms as well. Um, but the weddings and the bar mitzvahs aren't as, uh, as good of a return on that space.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the space is not taxable for rent, but any amenities that they could rent to you, such as tables, chairs, AV equipment, et cetera, would have sales tax added to it, just to clarify that statement.
Would beverage service be taxable if they provided coffee and tea and freshments and so on?
All right, so I have, uh.
Thank you.
Uh, Ryland wanted to make a comment, but we might have an answer back on the question. Did y'all have some comments you wanted to make on the original question?
If, if during a break, we could consult, cause there are several that need to be, we need to talk about that issue.
Okay, that's fine. All right, we'll come back to it then. Ryland, Garrett?
Yeah, it's interesting that, uh, Jim brought up meeting space, cause that's another thing that was brought up a couple times in P and Z last Thursday. Um, and it's amazing how that topic has found its way to a lot of different conversations that this council has had in the two years I've been here. Um, we've talked about it in the context of what to do with the building down at this, the end of this complex when we vacate it. We've talked about it in the context of what if we ever wanted to build a convention center. And, uh, also in, in the last, in the time since I've been on this council, which is two years just about, between, well, and even going back a little bit before that. So let's just say, in the last three to four years, we've had, um, one medical office building in Trophy Club get built. We've had, um, all of the Aaronberg's property there by the roundabout get built. We've got a, we've got a, a daycare, we've got some dentist office, we've got a few things like that. There's another medical office building over by Medlin that's been approved that hasn't started yet. There's another building, another development next to that where a Montessori school's going in that has an accompanying commercial building associated with that, right? And there's myriad of allowed uses there. And we've also had Hampton Inn go up and come online. We've had Homewood Suites go up and will be, be finished hopefully soon. And then we've got Holiday Inn that sometime before I die may rent a room. There's been ample opportunity for business people. Every one of those things I listed was an opportunity for a business person to make money on meeting space, and they didn't take it. The market is telling us something. We don't need meeting space. I think we found our answer. I've, uh, we've had this conversation, I've never thought about it that way, but just today, I started thinking, the great invisible hand, Adam Smith's great invisible hand has answered us, we don't need meeting space.
All right. So Garrett, and after Garrett speaks, what I'm gonna do is allow the two citizens that signed up to speak, uh, to either ask a question or speak, and then after that, we're gonna take a short recess. Uh, and then we're gonna come back and in detail, uh, deal with, um, the amendments to Exhibit B, uh, if there are any changes to that, so that we could move forward, uh, on some of those talking points. So that's kind of the plan at this point. Uh, so Garrett, you have the floor.
Yeah, I have, actually have a question, but I will point out that the, uh, Holiday Inn, for those who don't know, it is a full-service hotel. So you can see how well that's going. Um, my question is around the detention pond. And at P and Z the other night, and, and the question, or my concern is this. This detention pond runs along Indian Creek. And y'all have used a couple examples to show that it's a dry bed detaining pond. And there was a, there was mention in the meeting that the screening wall would look somewhat similar or be akin to what is around, uh, Hogan's Glen. And so I really just kind of wanted to confirm that, because there are some pictures that you show, which show a great example of, uh, a detention pond. Uh, so th- this is a good picture here. So the, the pond is below there.
That's Indian Creek right there.
Right, so Indian Creek runs there, so there'll be a sidewalk, there'll be some, some landscaping, and then the wall will actually be, I'm guessing that's six feet, there's a person there, so let's say six to eight feet. Is that, is that gonna be the same, is that gonna look like Hogan's? So you're going down that road at Indian Creek, cause you have the people that come out of Hogan's that are gonna turn there. I just want to make sure, get confirmation, that you're gonna have that same feel as you drive along there, and you're not gonna be able to see down into that dry bed. You're gonna have the appearance of that, um, stone wall across there.
That is how the amendment to the PD currently reads.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Uh, Josh can tell you more about the specifics and water flow and that kind of stuff, but in terms of the amendment to the PD, that's how it currently reads, is that the piece facing Indian Creek will be, uh, similar, uh, in look and feel to the, uh, wall, uh, on the other side of the street.
And that's what I thought was the case, but I just wanted to make sure for anybody watching or thinking about this is, although there is a dry bed down in there, it will, as you come along Indian Creek, it will be, it'll work with what Hogan's Glen has now. Or if you live in Hogan's and you have to snort out there and drive by it every day, it'll look and feel the same way.
And, uh, Josh Millsap, Buery 5310, Harvest Hill. Um, and I can just add, from a storage requirement for the detention, we will have to have that vertical wall that'll help, uh, provide the adequate storage as well. So there's, so there's no, not a possibility for eliminating that vertical wall.
Okay, and I might, just as we take a break, um, it would seem logical to me that if we had that wall that kind of went around that detention pond, maybe there's an opportunity to, to pick that same wall up and add it as a feature behind those townhomes. Just throwing it out there.
All right. Uh, so I have two citizens who signed up to speak, Glenn Strother and Louis Goldstein. So Glenn, if you want to come forward, identify yourself, and then Louis, after that, uh, we'll take your questions, comments, and, um, get your answers, or take a recess, depending on what's needed.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, Glenn Strother, One Over Hill Drive. The first part is a clarification question, uh, on infrastructure. Y'all talked about the retail and putting all the infrastructure in. So can we get very specific on all the infrastructure, all the water, all the sewer, all the paving, not just the roads, but all the parking? All that's gonna be in? Pads will be up to site? So it's obviously, plan design can be modified from the site plan, but besides that, we're pretty much ready to go?
That's ready, yeah.
So the answer is yes, I think, to get that on the tape.
Okay. Cause you said infrastructure, and we didn't really talk about parking and stuff like that, cause there's a lot of parking that goes along with that. So. The other part was just really what was brought up earlier, is that from what I'm hearing, the master developer is basically gonna go sell off the apartment pad area to a department developer. He's gonna sell off the townhomes to a townhome developer, and then may control the retail.
And may sell off the hotel site.
And, and the hotel site to generate revenues and a piece. So instead of, from what was originally concepted, now we're there. And then the other concern that doesn't seem to be a lot of concern is, well, we're not going to hold any type of retail development timeframe to get up before the apartments can go. So you'll end up with apartments up and possibly retail, but no timeframe, no lock-in on retail on what was previously in the amendment. So I would encourage council to maybe tweak what was previously approved, but either create a timetable that either after 12 months of marketing or whatever timetable, you build at least one shell, or you build X amount of square feet of shell in those pads. Now, as you've got developers onboard, you can see what was developed at South Lake. That stuff was built in pads, developed in shelves, retailers came in, modified that, and went. So you can do some of that. I will say, in my opinion, I think the site plan modifications and stuff like that, much more amiable to the town, much more amiable to, I think, development. So I think there's a great improvement of what's now come, come forward. But I'm concerned with, even though, okay, you have zoning, and yes, council can say, well, no, you can never build apartments, but let's say 10 years down the road, council, we really tried, but we haven't got anything. But we've got a great market for apartments. We urge you to amend the PD so we can put retail in there. So unless something gets, does build, and like I said, and then there's some adage to the point of build it and they will come. Maybe not all of it, cause I'm in development, I understand you want to be able to market and sell a spot that can have flex in it. So you don't have this shelf. This, this restaurant wants 8,000 square feet besides, instead of 5,000 square feet, then you have that flexibility to build that eight, and that's certainly neat. But I would, again, encourage the council to consider some type of timeframe lock that some retailer needs to be up and, and operating along, along with the time, timetable of your 24 months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strother. Mr. Goldstein?
Good evening, everyone. Louis Goldstein, 68, Cypress Court. So I attended some of the original hearings where Mr. Beck put up these pictures of shops at Legacy, on which this concept was sold previously. I don't see any shops at Legacy pictures up there here today. I just want to point that out. When I was a young boy in school, one of the things I was forced to read was Animal Farm. Little did I know how relevant that would be. A perfectly good concept, as good for all, starting out, slowly over time morphing and changing until it was just beneficial for the very few. Do with that comment what you will. Um, it's clearly changing, it's clearly continuing to change. Maybe there's some elements of this that are for the better, maybe they're not, I don't know. But the one thing I have seen is that every loophole that can be gone through, every wormhole, every amendment, every adjustment, everything that can be done to sell this thing is not necessarily being done to the benefit of the members of the community. That's my overall statement. I do want to point out one thing on the, uh, preliminary site plan, if somebody wouldn't mind pulling that up.
He'll do it for you.
Oh, can I do that myself?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Just back to the, the new preliminary site plan.
You got it. One second.
Last stuff. Thank you. As someone who lives in Hogan's Glen, owns property in Hogan's Glen, I continue to be concerned by the road that cuts straight through, almost without curvature, to Hogan's Glen Drive, in that it's going to be a, a throughway, a shortcut, a way of getting into the neighborhood. It's not built with roundabouts, it's not built with obstructions. And I have real concern in this design, that it becomes nothing but a rush hour pass-through. And that is nothing that is good for the neighborhood. So I urge the council and/or P and Z to, whatever site plan they have any control over, to see if something can be done to make that a little less of a straight shot. That's all my comments. I appreciate you allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. It is 8:45, and we're gonna recess for 10 minutes. If you are. It is 8:57, and we are back from reset, recess. We are continuing on item three, dealing with the changes to the PD document. And I wanted to direct our attention to, uh, for the council, it's Exhibit B. You have a small handout of that that was at your dais tonight that shows the summary of the changes that have been proposed by not only the applicant, but by, uh, P and Z. And so, uh, what I'm gonna do is take us through each page, see if anybody has any comments about those, or questions about those, and then we'll see if there are other sections, uh, of the PD that we need to, uh, address that were changed. So I'm gonna take us through what is, um, page seven of the Exhibit B, I think. Hopefully those page numbers work. And, um, if any of the applicant people here don't know what page that is, I'll try to help you, or give you a copy or something like that. Is everybody with me? So page seven begins with, uh, paragraph 28, and, uh, looks like that paragraph 29 changed. So 29, the new 29 allows for the row house description. And so anybody have any other questions, comments about that section? Nobody? All right, let's turn the page. In your handout, we're now gonna go to page 54 of that exhibit. And, um, picks up where it just strikes some things about urban residential at the top. And gets down to number three, talks about, uh, facades and building materials. And, um, I think we had a P and Z, uh, Ron or Dennis can have to help me with number three. Wasn't there some concern about item three and the, and the use of material there?
Cementous plank siding, there was some concern about that, and if the chairman would like to, to.
Dennis?
Expand on that. Yes, sir. Um, cementous, uh, uh, plank is basically a cement-wood mixed product, and it can be, uh, formulated in anything that looks like wood, looks like siding, um, can, can look like stucco. Um, we disagreed with, P and Z disagreed with it, but we talked with the applicant and, um, agreed on the, you have, you have it in two different places now. And the one I'm talking about would be on page 50.
54?
No, 50.
50?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm sorry.
No, remember we have.
I'll have to go to the floor when I'm sorry.
It's in two sec, it's in two places, one of which is the urban residential and the other is in the townhomes, I think.
All right.
And, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, uh, what we said was, agreed at the P and Z meeting is that cementous plank and siding may be utilized in recessed areas only, not visible from the street. And because this is, this is for 85% of the, of the facade. And, um, so that had, that had been agreed upon with the applicant. Now, of course, that's P and Z, that's subject to them agreeing to it again tonight. And then it is again on page 54, sir.
All right, thank you. I forgot that it was on page 50. All right, council, any questions, concerns about that?
Um, I, I do want to comment, that was discussed at the P and Z meeting. Um, I thought that the, uh, agreement that was arrived at, at the P and Z meeting made a lot of sense. It was practical for everyone involved. It allayed some concerns that I'd heard from residents regarding cementitious plank, which is kind of basically more known as hardy plank. Um, there was, uh, one comment about building materials, though, that held, um, a, uh, a P and Z commissioner had gotten the idea based on some of the, the definition of, of smooth block that that translated to cinder block. definition of smooth block that that translated to cinder block. I did not believe, based on the statements that Mike made, that that meant cinder block. Could you clarify for everyone, just for the purpose of stating for the record, that that doesn't approve what is commonly considered cinder block?
That's correct. And the thought was, was it gray cinder block that gets a coat of paint on it? And the answer is no. This is an architectural block that has color all the way through the block already in the concrete.
Thank you, Mike. All right, good question. Anybody else in this section? So I'm going to take you to page 55 and 54, at least at the bottom of 54, 4B. And that sentence continues on to 55 that says, allowed on units facing Trophy Club Drive not to exceed a total of six units. And it's talking about balconies. So what's the rationale to limit it to only six units, when there are more than six units along Trophy Club Drive? It seems like balconies might be attractive there, to me.
Well, the original PD, as it is approved, prohibits balconies, period, along Trophy Club Drive. We requested, when we saw that, that we get at least the ability, there's an interior corner located right here. If you can see that area right there. I know it's really small. Let me see if I can blow that up better.
Just click the plus button, or that'll go. Okay.
That's one way. Sorry. So the difficulty in putting a town, two of these brownstone rowhouse townhomes in this corner is that when you come to a corner of the building, you've got to split that unit at an angle here in order to have light from the exterior of the building. And so we were focused on this part of the building. And the idea was, these six units here have to be flats rather than be a townhouse-type unit because of the configuration of the unit. And that's where we asked to have the ability to put the balconies here.
Okay.
What I've been told by my architect this morning is that we have the same condition
Over there.
over here on this interior unit. But I didn't know that at the meeting Thursday night. I'm not sure that that's up for discussion here tonight, but if it were, we'd like to have that same ability to do that here. Otherwise, we'll have to figure out some other configuration with the brownstone. So there are actually two, because of this sawtoothing, we were really focused on this part of the building over here. And it only happens on that interior corner. This interior corner is buffered by these hallways, so there's nothing out in front of it. And that is the only other interior corner, is this one over here. So technically, on the site plan, as we're looking at, there's a total of 12 units with the request for 12 balconies, but we overlooked this interior one to the right.
All right. So you would be saying that 4B potentially be modified to say 12 units at two locations or something, six units at two locations?
If it could be correct. Six at two locations or 12 total.
All right. So would you hit the minus key twice, minus button at the top?
Yes.
All right, great, thanks. So around the perimeter, are there any balconies, or is that just, we're not worried about that really now, I'm just curious?
There would be balconies, because the other homes around the perimeter are flats. They're not the brownstones. And so virtually all of these homes around the perimeter and on the interior courtyard as well would have balconies.
Okay, thank you. All right, council, any other sections of this that you want to ask questions about? Philip, did you have a question?
I just had a question on the, along those same lines. The back of the complex, will that match, that parking garage area, will that match the building as well as the front?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
All right, Ryland?
I have one, and Mayor, you can stop me if this isn't appropriate for this portion, but I'd like to address our table in Exhibit B, where, on page 21 of Exhibit B, where different maximum number of stories for different uses are listed there. And there were some changes that were accepted by P&amp;Z.
Go right ahead.
All of which were very beneficial. We talked about lowering the size of the apartment buildings. That was a big, big thing for the aesthetics of the development. It got me to thinking about, and based on what Chase said about kind of the vision for the progress of the development, it got me to thinking about our use here on the corner of Trophy Club Drive in Indian Creek, Block E. Those two buildings are retail office. So adjacent to the top there is residential. And adjacent to the, what's actually north, to the right there is also residential, that's Hogan's Glen. I'm a little concerned that we have the ability, it may not be a likelihood, but I'm a little concerned that we have the ability for those buildings abutting those two residential uses to potentially be six stories, if they go full office. Oh, Dennis is correcting me. My man.
Two-story.
Are they limited to two-story elsewhere in the document?
Excuse me, Dennis Sheridan, One Hill, Custer Park. I'd have to take a few seconds to look at the PD again, but there is a limitation of, and there's a site plan.
Okay.
On page 20, I'm on the real PD. Go to the page before that. I take it back. On the real PD, page 21, there is a line of site plan from Indian Creek.
Okay.
And it talks about one-story retail, which would be building E. Now, remember, one story in retail is 20 feet, which is also plus air conditioning and equipment above it. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. You guys are all on the same page there. Appreciate it. Thanks.
All right. So the fact that there were other changes in Exhibit B, is everything in Exhibit B that was this handout that's clipped together, help me, is this packet that we have Exhibit B, or is it the entire PD?
It includes the actual ordinance itself, Exhibit B, Exhibit C, and then the SGP ordinance as well. And it's Exhibit.
And so the Exhibit B, Patricia, help me, could we take action just on Exhibit B and then move to other things, or do we need to include it in the main motion of the ordinance and everything else?
If you're wanting to amend anything, then you'll need to take action individually on that. That's probably the simplest way. And then in the end, we'll approve the ordinance.
Okay. All right. So Philip's indicating he wants the floor. Philip?
I was telling Ryland what page the one-story is on.
The one-story line of sites on page 24.
I just got shafted. We call that getting shafted, when Philip tells you what page to find the answer to your question.
All right. So it looked like all of y'all were wanting to speak, so whoever wants to speak.
So it's me.
Mr. Mayor, again, on page 56, the addition of the, I guess that's Romanet 9. This is where I talked previously about not requiring specifically a gate, but some other type of traffic deterrent. To allow the townhouse developer the flexibility of maybe providing some other means of deterring traffic from going down the townhome. And I'm going to suggest, I just wrote it down, I'm going to suggest, prior to the issuance of any building permit authorizing construction of any townhome allowed by this ordinance, this is the addition, "Developers shall provide a means of deterring non-resident traffic from entering the townhome street such as," and then continue the rest of the language. So it provides the flexibility to the townhome developer to do something other than just a gate.
So let me clarify something, because we had a discussion about wall and other control over the townhome section at break. So the intent is, if this passes, you're going to come back with a preliminary and a final plat that all of a sudden is different pieces specifically of the plat.
Yes, sir.
With the intent that you sell off the pieces. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And so once you sell the townhome piece, whole new thing starts. So is it no longer, Patricia, part of a PD once it's sold off?
No, the PD's not. It's still part of the PD.
Okay. So our regulations would call for that there has to be a wall between residential and commercial. So that idea that was brought up would fall back under those regulations and be dealt with as part of site plan development and...
Actually, part of plating.
Part of plating, okay. So that'll come back in that particular case. Right, Garrett? Saying no?
Patricia, I don't think that's correct. It's still part of the PD, right?
Yeah, she said that, yeah.
It's still, yes.
But it's not going to be subject to what the other town regulations are. It's subject to the PD regulations.
If the PD has no regulation, the code of ordinance is control where the PD does not.
If the PD doesn't call out that there has to be a wall between residential and commercial, they don't have to put one there.
But if code of ordinance did, it would.
The PD is silent on many of the site plan requirements. So it's going to fall back to the code of ordinance.
And there is language in the PD that says where there a conflict exists, or there's a regulation that is contained within the code of ordinances, and not this ordinance that the code of ordinances shall control.
But do those rules about adjacent uses only apply under the code of ordinance under specific zoning districts?
A non-residential use abutting a residential use, period.
Period blanket. That's good.
So let me ask the question too. Does the PD control everything? This is just an exhibit? It's not, it doesn't, we're not bound to anything on this?
The PD regulations can control all the zoning regulations, all the items that are covered. You're talking about the site plan in terms of...
They have a six-foot masonry wall listed that goes along. So are we bound by that because the PD is silent in that?
The PD doesn't, what does it say about the wall? I'm sorry.
It doesn't say anything.
The PD doesn't say, okay.
The preliminary site plan is not an official regulatory instrument?
The language in the PD will control, and things can't be just added to the site plan that will then override what the regulations are. And if the regulations in the PD are silent, then it defaults back to the town ordinances.
Which would be an eight-foot minimum masonry wall.
So we're okay that that says that, that we're not bound by that? Or should we eliminate that?
On the site plan, which is that gets into the details, that's where that will definitely need to be corrected, for sure.
But then it'll also be reflected in the preliminary plat that comes before the P&amp;Z and council.
New preliminary plat, amended preliminary plat.
That's correct.
Very good, yes, sir.
So Chase, you gave us some wording for page 56, item IX, I guess, because it struck for, would you say that again for what goes prior to prior?
Prior to, where it says electronic control, it says, "Developers shall provide a means of deterring non-resident traffic from entering the townhome street such as an electronic."
You want to go a little slower? I'm not sure we got that.
I think one of the things that Bill and I had a chance to briefly visit right before the meeting, and we were kind of, we were talking about this, and, you know, I don't think anyone thinks that the gate at the one end of the kind of roundabout thing is a great solution to it. So we were kind of thinking, brainstorming, how could we skin that cat? One way is to make it almost like a crash gate, because you're going to have to have fire access there as a second point of entrance for fire code. And so could you make it a wrought iron, a very attractive fence that is then bordered with stone or planters or something, so it looks like an amenity, and it looks better than a gate? You know, that's just randomly sitting there, you know? And so I don't know if we're, I don't think the applicant is maybe ready to define exactly what that is, but maybe it's, the word is, such as a gate, crash gate, something like that, that would meet, that would be acceptable to the town and the fire marshal.
Mayor, if I may, I did craft some possible language too, that states as follows, "Prior to the issuance of any building permit authorizing construction of any townhome allowed by this ordinance, the main road providing access to the townhomes shall be constructed such that through traffic is restricted by keeping one end of the road closed with the additional placement of approved traffic calming devices designed to slow the speed of traffic along said road. The final design of these devices, designed to restrict and calm traffic, shall require approval by the town engineer, the fire chief, and the town manager they're designate."
All right. So questions about that? Garrett, do you have a comment?
Here are my comments about this. One, I think this gets back to the site plan, the site planning approval. I think either we have to do that, or we've got to figure this out tonight. Like Ryland tells us, Hamilton references every meeting. I'll say, I've lived in Trophy Club since 1992. And I've been cutting through those apartments over there since 1992. So this is an issue that is near and dear to my heart. So two things. One, I don't know if I really want to cut the residents that live in here off from getting out into the community. I'm not sure that's what I want to do. And let me explain why. We're a golf cart community. The country club is right up the road. It's easy to get out on your golf cart, and I can imagine my mom or dad living here, or some of my friends that pop on their golf cart, go around this little roundabout, out on Indian Creek and up to the country club. So I'm in favor of gating this entire thing. I don't want it to be a cut through, for sure. But I don't know if the crash gate's the right answer. But if you don't have the crash gate, how do you control traffic from going here? And I'm not a big fan of speed bumps. When I lived in Hogan's, they tried to propose speed bumps, and I was anti-speed bump. So I don't like those in a residential neighborhood. So I think the only solution, and I'm willing to listen, but is you gate it on both ends, and you create the access that way. I think if we put in the language that we're talking about, it sounds to me like we could put up a sign that said, "Do not go through here." I know that's not the intention, but I would prefer to have the residents that live here have access to the community, and I would prefer it be a deterrent to cut through here, because I can promise you, if you can find a way to cut through, you will. Those are my only comments.
Well, we have a couple issues. First of all, it's my understanding, and I'll refer to the engineers with text, putting a gate right there next to text, right away. It's my understanding that that's an issue.
Has text approved that curb cut?
I don't know.
They have?
That was actually going to be my question, is would they, is the existence of the curb cut the reason why they have a problem with the gate?
That is, I think. But I think there are also other ways of addressing the issue. We went through the traffic calming.
Because, I mean, that, so I don't know how to solve this issue, and I know that's what we're here to do. But let's say we did the crash gate scenario. So we put a crash gate there, and we put a sign that said, "Not a through street." People, I think people would, I mean, you could create a lot of traffic going up and down that road where people are going to that roundabout and coming back through. What is the text language? What is their aversion to putting a gate there? Because it's not immediately off of it. I'm just curious.
Josh Millsap with Burey, the main issue is if you do put a gate here, and the logistics of if you have two or three cars stacking up, you start getting stacking into 114. So being able to place, have a gate placement, getting it in there without still having the adequate stacking distance.
And the curb cut can't be moved further?
Because of the placement of the existing on-ramp and infrastructure, if you start moving this drive, this drive also starts relocating as well. So you start kind of having a domino effect.
Ryland?
Do you all feel that eliminating that curb cut altogether is too adverse of a way to enter the, for someone to enter, if they had to go all the way up to the other curb cut and then come down? That's pretty far. I originally, right before you just mentioned that about moving it up, my thought was, hmm, if I was going to want to live there, I wouldn't mind if there was no curb cut there at all. But my thought was that it would be up closer to the office building as opposed to where it needs to be. So if there's an issue with having two that close together, then that's not a viable solution either.
Isn't the minimum between curb cuts like four hundred and eighty-three feet? Something like that?
I can't remember off the top of my head, but yeah. It's, I think it's four, it's four twenty-five, four fifty, yeah.
Like that.
So, so text dot, text dots gave you permission. What about encore? You, you've got a transmission line right in the middle of that entrance.
You will have, your transmission line does stretch across your entrance, um, as well as a, uh-
The second, the second entrance. There's a transmission tower labeled right in the middle of that drive entrance. See it right there?
The entrance right there, that circle. I see that. Yeah, so we'll, we might have to shift that drive up slightly to the north to get, to get out of that.
Ollie, you wanna check that other air conditioner? Thank you. Maybe April did it, but I think you have to hit hold or something. Thank you. Go ahead.
And we can still, we should, we can still move that up and still keep adequate circulation, uh, right there. If we shift this, this drive up here, then you start creating a kind of a dead end situation where everybody coming in has to either go left or right. Starts creating a traffic hazard.
So, the, the other solution potentially is that you shift all the town homes further into the development, therefore leaving room for queuing, uh, recognizing you deal with some road issues and some other construction up at that roundabout area. But if you shift everything a little bit, you solve the queuing problem.
Solve the queuing problem, and then we start getting into the, uh, squeezing down the detention area as well.
Yeah, understand that.
Yeah.
That, so the one other comment that I have, somehow we've gotta come up with some wording in this IX section to deal with gating or traffic control issues. But I see that we have the same through traffic issue with the arterial road that we're talking about, coming in off of the service road of one fourteen, going right through and out that exit across Hogan's Glen. The original plan showed some traffic circles, calming devices there that I think would be of significant benefit, which says you might lose some parking, uh, in some sections to accomplish that, and you might lose some green space. But I see at least two places for traffic calming. Uh, one, close to the town homes, close to that traffic circle at that intersection of streets and parking, uh, that would surely slow that down a little bit, I think. And the other one is on your far left, right after you came in off the one fourteen service road, as you enter in between C and five A or whatever that building is, you end up, that first little section right there with a, again, a small traffic circle. You're not dealing with two lane traffic circles. You're dealing with something to make people slow down a little bit to come through there, and maybe you lose a little green space and a few parking spaces, but I think that's needed. And, and so, Pat, Ron, where's the appropriate time to deal with it? They're gonna come back with preliminary and final plat, and can we deal with it at that time and not have to worry with it tonight?
It would, it's really a zoning issue. Uh, the plat, all the plat's doing is, uh, basically enforcing whatever the zoning requires and so it can be filed at the county. The way the public notice was done, I, I don't really see a way we could address that unless we could come to some type of agreement that it would, could fall under one of the sections that was part of the notice to, if, if the applicant is amenable to that.
So, so, so we, what they brought in was a new concept plan and changed things all around. And the description of this con- concept plan's not really in the PD document, per se. So, you're saying it makes it difficult to put restrictions unless they just agree to them?
At the very least, yeah. And if they, even if they did agree to it, we, we'd have to make sure it falls into a section that's included in the public notice, which, again, this was noticed very specifically.
Even though they're gonna come back and replat? So, they could, when they come back with preliminary and final plat, they could change that if they chose to do so.
Right, and they could change the, the preliminary site plan too. The, the PD thirty regs do allow staff to approve minor changes, or they could bring it back to council if they wanted to, uh, but, because the preliminary plat is gonna have to have to line up with what the, what the preliminary site plan shows. They, they do need to, to be calibrated, as it were. So, uh, they could, as the, the twenty-fourteen preliminary pla- preliminary site plan shows, they could go back and add traffic calming features of their own cognizance to, to try to, you know, prevent traffic from flying through here. And there's a lot of different options you can do to do that. You can push buildings closer to the road. You can put parallel parking instead of head-in parking. There's, uh, there's road humps. There's all sorts of, uh, chicanes, things that you can put in there.
Okay. And I think Garrett's point is extremely valuable, as I see it too, is that putting a crash gate at the end isn't the solution for what I think becomes attractive with people that live there. I think they need to have a way to get in and out effectively, personally. So, that, that's just my opinion. All right. So, how do we skin this cat, folks? Uh, Ryland?
Um, about, so, specific to the town home road, which is what you were talking about with the crash gate. Um, does our representative from Green Brick have anything he might be able to add to the discussion?
Come all the way up to the microphone, please.
I think at this point, uh, after what I've heard, I would like to look at that in detail, but from a common sense standpoint, you know, you could make that access point only to the town homes an exit. That's a, that's a possibility. It's something that, uh, from a common, I mean, I'm speaking on, on my behalf right now, not on anybody else's. So, I, I think if you angled it to where you can't turn in there off the service road, that could eliminate some traffic. Is that what you're wanting to talk about, is the road?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, and then maybe make your main entrance on the other side, being that you could drive a golf cart to the rest of the neighborhood like you were mentioning. So, that's the only thing in my mind that I'm coming up with right now, if you're really wanting it to be a gated community. Because of the stacking, you, you can't put that gate there and, and stack up on the service road. But does that make sense?
And, and that the, the bottom curb cut would be an exit-only curb cut that would be turning to the right?
I mean, so, because text dot, I guess, has approved that, so I don't know if you can angle it to where you can't turn in, and then text dot blesses it. I, I don't know. I'm not an engineer, so.
So, let me, let, let me ask you a question.
Sure, go ahead.
If I'm right.
And then Dennis says, come on up, Dennis.
And you guys, listen to this. I wanna make sure that I understand this right, because this might be a solution. I don't know.
I don't know. Anyways, just brainstorming.
If-
If, if I could add to that real quick, the location for the on-ramp, just how, how you have that right there, we could not do an exit only, just from text dot perspective. You could exit out, and they're not going to want you to exit out straight onto the on-ramp. So, that's likely gonna be an entrance-only drive approach.
Okay.
Right in.
Right in only, yes.
And ma- and ma- maybe, maybe what we do is, and maybe what we do is, is reverse the thinking here. So, on this end of the town homes, we put the crash gate, emergency exit, you can't get through, right? So, it's only the exit and make the entry to the town homes where the roundabout is up there. So, the only time you would go out this way is if there was an emergency, somebody needed to, to crash through with the fire truck. But if you lived in the town home community, you'd have to come in and come around and go down that other way.
You would block, block, what if you came in and went down that row of parking in there? Did you do that?
Yeah, I just wouldn't have the turn.
It's still blocked, it's still blocked off. But make it, making, you know, where you can go in, that main entrance go down.
Dennis, you have a comment?
Mr. Mayor, um, the essence of one of the conversations on, I got a couple things, but on the town home specifically, was that it was originally gonna be a cut through, and, uh, then the applicant made the cul-de-sac or the little roundabout at the very end to prevent that. It's different than the other cut through because it's going through residential. Um, Tom with Tignal has an idea that I'd, he'd like to present, and then I'd like to talk about what was published in paper. Tom?
Tom?
Well, I'm just listening, trying to follow the conversation. Sounds like there's multiple things.
There are.
Um, to your comment, Garrett, just because you want the residents to be able to get back into the town and not have to come out to one fourteen, uh, we have in similar situations to this just had removable bollards. So, at the end of the cul-de-sac, you space them so your golf carts can get through it, but a car can't get through it. Emergency vehicles, removable bollards, we do it all the time. They come up, those things just pop right out. Fire trucks can get in and out. They put a knock, a knock's box at the end or something like that. You can do a lot of different things that make them attractive. But they, you don't really notice them, um, and they can do all the landscaping and stuff around it. But it is still your barrier to keep your cut-through traffic through there. Uh, and so, you know, I can just see the value of people living there, coming down the frontage road of one fourteen to be able to just come right in, get home and do that, and you don't, you don't give that up. So, maybe the bollards, it's pretty simple, and it's, it's really not some big gate type, type thing, and you space them for your golf carts.
That's a great idea.
But again, where do we, where do we deal with that?
In this section right here.
This, Mr. Mayor? I'd like to, this, I'm reading what was published in the, um, uh, Fort Worth, uh, newspaper, and, um, number fifteen, attachment labeled Exhibit I, preliminary site plan changes to other sec- to other sections of PD thirty necessitated by, associated with, or resulting from the requested amendments. Now, I'm not trying to delay this. I'd like this to be a cooperative effort, but that tells me that anything on that site plan's up for discussion and, and a condition. Thank you, sir.
All right. Uh, so, um, let's go back and see where did we wanna make a change.
Mayor, if I could just add one thing real quick, just since we're on the subject of streets and traffic calming, there is a small section in the PD thirty regs that do say enhanced paving may include speed humps, pavement striping, paver, stone, cobblestone, concrete, integral colored, integral colored concrete to, to help for speed control and to mark pedestrian crosswalks and for decorative purposes, for what it's worth. Just wanted to bring that up.
Where is that?
This would be on page fourteen, uh, under one street paving enhancement, which is at the bottom of the page.
So, are you saying that we should list bollards, or is it vague enough that I don't have to list bollards?
That's, this would not include bollards. Bollards are more of a restrictive device. These are more traffic calming devices that are discussed in, in section one.
Okay. So, um-
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't what we're talking about fit under, on page fifty-six for-
Roman at nine?
Ro- Roman nine, one X.
Yeah.
I mean-
I just, I just took the language.
Kinda got deterred on how we wanna design this, but if we think bollards work, then why wouldn't we include bollards?
Yeah, I think, I think Tom, I think Tom totally earned his paycheck tonight with that idea. Good on you, Tom. Uh, I, I, let me just float this out there, since I just, I just transcribed Roman at nine and replaced it with what we had discussed, which I thought was a great idea and seemed like our developers were on the same page. Prior to the issuance of any building permit authorizing construction of any town home allowed by this ordinance, bollards shall be installed at the end of the main road providing access to the town homes that is nearest to Indian Creek Drive. Said bollards shall meet all requirements of the town's fire code and shall require the final approval of the fire chief and town manager. Basically, just took out the gate part and replaced it with bollards and specified one location instead of two.
I'd add one thing to that. I'd like the spacing to-
Accommodate a golf cart.
Accommodate. Yeah, standard golf cart.
Okay. So, um, you're gonna add that, that accommodation?
Yes, sir.
All right. And so, I'm gonna have Ryland read that again, see if you all agree to it, and then we'll get it captured appropriately, and that's gonna have to come in the way of a motion at some point, okay?
Okay, you want me to read it again?
Yep.
Okay. Prior to the issuance of any building permit authorizing construction of any town home allowed by this ordinance, bollards shall be installed at the end of the main road providing access to the town homes that is nearest to Indian Creek Drive. Said bollards shall be spaced to accommodate passage by a standard golf cart and meet all requirements of the town's fire code and shall require the final approval of the fire chief and town manager.
All right. Uh, so, Chase, you wanna stand up and say what, whether you agree or disagree? And if, uh, anybody else with the group wants to say anything, they can. Uh, there was some discussion, so I don't wanna-
Yeah, I think we're okay with either the bollards or a gate.
Yeah, we like the bollards.
Or, or a gate. We're open to either.
Okay.
Let's use the bollards. I like the bollards.
Okay.
It's a golf cart, was a great.
Okay. All right. So, we have agreement, uh, with the representatives from Beck, uh, and the, uh, Green Brick to that wording that would replace the Roman numeral nine on page fifty-six. Is that right? All right. So-
Nick, can I make one comment?
Please.
Um, guys, when y'all build this, and I know this gets lost on developers a lot, I'm not asking for this to be included in this document by any means, but whoever ends up doing this, if you'll remember, sometimes when people are playing golf, they might need a little bit wider space, if you know what I'm, I mean, driving through the, so let's not make it real tight. And the other thing is, we might wanna make sure that we provide some lighting down here at night so we don't get a car cruising through there and doesn't realize that they're bollards. So, just two things to consider when you're doing it. I don't think we need to add anything, but just as you're planning, think about those things.
All right. So, can we, can we look specifically on page fifty-five where it talked about, um, six units with balconies? Uh, so, so that is four B.
Which fifty-five, Nick?
In the PD.
In the, in the Exhibit B. Page fifty-five, we talked about, uh, with, uh, Pacilio that he failed to point out, or we failed to consider that they needed two groups of six. Oh, is the page different or something? I'm sorry.
It's actually on fifty-four. Yeah.
Okay, with amendments, it changed, okay. Gotcha. Spacing made it actually page fifty-four. All right. Page fifty-four, four B, I think.
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
All right. And we, so that, whether it says, uh, twelve units or whatever, you could just say twelve units and solve it.
What was stated earlier was to add to the end of that sentence after six units at two locations for a maximum total of twelve balconies.
Yep. Is that okay? All right. So, that's the second piece. And, and the, and I just wanna get in detail here so I can come back to this as we make a motion, five A IX, okay, which is on page fifty-six, okay. All right. Um, all right, any other places we need to address changes?
Uh, page, page seven, um, that definition will change, because that has six on there as well.
Page seven, under-
The definition of row house.
That's in the red book.
Yep, yep, in the big book, yep. So-
Actually, what is moved down into that subsection removes the six. If you look at the, if that's what you're looking at, Councilwoman Scholz, you're looking at the definition number twenty-nine?
Page seven.
Number twenty-nine. If you're looking at, at this one, it's- Remove the, each individual row house shall be separated by a minimum two foot for unit elevation. Balcony shall be allowed on units facing Trophy Club Drive and to not exceed total of six units. That's actually been removed down to this actual regulatory, yes, sir. That was actually moved down to the regulatory.
Just to enumerate, eliminate the duplicity?
Yes, we removed it.
Okay, thank you.
So, what are you saying, Patricia?
Is that, it's actually twen- the, on the, this Exhibit B with the excerpts, uh, page seven of Exhibit B twenty-nine, that last sentence has been removed.
That way, it's only...
It was moved, it was actually a regulation, so it was moved down to the regulatory.
Okay, so we don't really have to do anything?
That's clear, that's good.
Okay, all right. All right, what else do we need to address, anything, before we deal with a motion to approve? Dennis?
On page seventy-five of Exhibit B, there is a detention area wall exhibit. At the P and Z, we had put two different exhibits in, and only one is shown here. The difference is, this detention area will be totally controlled by fences or walls. And this wall is specifically to go against the Indian Creek portion, and a portion of the creek area, but as it, as the elevations change and it gets over towards the townhomes and the interior A drive, the elevations are equal. And the next picture was supposed to show a wall with a wrought iron fence on it that's not in here. But it is in there.
Oh, yeah, Bill.
Yes, sir. It's page twenty-four, I think. Yeah, see this one? This was supposed, according to the P and Z recommendation, this was put in, was supposed to be put into the change.
So you're saying on page seventy-five, it's missing...
This, this particular page.
Detention site view that was represented on page twenty-three of the presentation night.
That's right. In addition to this, what's here, it needs that. And for the clarification, is you see where it has the wrought iron, I can't read that, but the decorative fence on top of the wall? That's where the elevations come equal, level out. Thank you, sir.
Hey, Dennis, Dennis, can you, can we pull up a site plan and kinda show us where the change in the wall is?
Sure.
If you will?
If I don't ruin the computer. Did I just pass it?
Yep, you did.
Keep going. All right. Go ahead.
Let me shoot, this might be a little better. Come back down. There you go.
Oh, there you go.
That might be a little better depiction.
You handle it, you know what you're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, thanks, Dennis.
So the taller section, the one with the wall section that's in the PD current...
Okay, so what, what I'm looking for is, give me where I've got a stone wall that's six foot tall versus where I've got wrought iron, where people can see.
So stone wall is going to be along Indian Creek?
Okay.
And you'll likely have a section back along the creek?
Okay.
That would also have a vertical wall? That, that wall height would dissipate as you come back into the site?
Okay.
And you'd go to the other section with just the guardrail fence up along the townhomes and back along, back into the site? With the, it'd have the guardrail and the...
So behind retail F?
Correct.
There is no stone wall, it is decorative wrought.
The height would go from, the height, right, it'd be...
Well, let, let me see if I can answer it. At ground level, so what you're standing at, there would be a wrought iron fence. Below you, probably twelve feet, there would be a wall, but it's below grade, so to speak.
No, no, I understand that.
Okay.
What, what I'm, I'm purely, I'm purely viewing this as something that's aesthetic.
Aesthetic, yeah.
Personally, I don't like the wrought iron. I don't like the fact that you can look in there. I was, I liked the fact that it was the, the stone wall. So, I don't know if we wrap that and have it diminishing, because, and I don't know what the answer is, but I'm just telling you what I like and don't like.
Well, the thought, too, is we would have, this would, this acts, the railing acts strictly is from a safety perspective. You would have landscaping to, to, to more camouflage that, to not be able to look down into it as well.
I, I, I'm, I'm, I could be convinced that the right amount of landscaping would be satisfactory, but the question is, what is the right amount of landscaping? I mean, and I don't know how we define that tonight, maybe it's not an issue for anybody else, but this, this project's, it is a special project, and I don't, I don't want this detention area to really be visible. And if that's landscaping, you guys can put something in here and prove up that it's gonna be dense, thick, and you're not gonna be able to see it? Yes, something like that, or if you're gonna wrap a little bit of that wall, I don't know how we get there, but what I don't want is there to be, see, you can come out on the Indian Creek there, and if you look to the right, and this retail building may not be built for years, it may be a little garden office, but for a few years at least, you're gonna be able to look right into a wrought iron fence, and I, that's just kinda...
Also, what you...
You don't want page twenty-four, is what you're saying.
Is that the one that, that?
Yeah.
Yes, I do not want that.
And what you're, what you'll have, if, no, I mean, we'll have, you'll have your screen where that's ornamental grass is kinda dressed up, but block that from a solid appearance standpoint, or it could be, you know, shrubs to a certain height.
Is that evergreen?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of neat stuff you can do, and I don't know how we qualify that in here, but...
Also, as you come in off of Indian Creek, you also have the building that blocks it, you'll have the cars, the parking, everything else that also adds to that screening, but beyond that, so you have, you'll have your buffer here between the building and the cars, plus you'll have additional landscaping trees along the edge of that facility as well. So you'll kinda have two different tiers of screen.
I think Garrett's concern is that if that garden office, or whatever that is, never comes to fruition, what's, what's the recourse? You know, it, you know, yes, it will be partially screened by the building and be partially screened by parking, but if that would never come to fruition, then it's an open fence with some trees.
Yeah, the, the evergreen landscaping would be installed at day one with the pond.
Okay. Tom, Jim?
Tom, did you have a comment?
There's one other element to this. I, I know we've been working with staff to try to develop some criteria, and Burry's really done a good job with what we see in here, but there, but there is one, we didn't anticipate all the detail that needed to come tonight, and so we just didn't get them all of our comments ahead of time. But one thing we've gotta keep in mind, too, with the pond, is we've gotta get access down into it. You got a twelve-foot drop, which really is not reflected here, so we're gonna need a double gate in there somewhere, and how are we gonna get a ramp down into it? So you can't just totally wrap it with a wall, because we gotta breach that somehow or have at least a section in there. So I just wanna be careful in your criteria that we don't say no fencing, because we will have to have at least an opening, a gate opening, and we gotta figure a way to get a ramp system down in there for where they can maintain and clean it out.
Right.
So, just wanna, I wanted to make sure, 'cause that, that isn't reflected on here. Now, when we work through that with these guys, it'll get there, but as you're having that conversation, I just don't want anybody to get upset if there's a, a section in there, if you do have a wall that's gonna end up being, you know, twelve, fifteen feet wide, that will have to be gated.
And I would understand if there was a gate in there. What I don't want is to drive out here and I come and I can...
Exactly.
See that wrought iron fence.
Correct. But even in that, we can't, we wouldn't have landscaping in front of it, so we'll have to be creative about that. But I just wanted to...
Okay.
All right.
Does anybody have any proposal on how we memorialize what this particular piece of fence is gonna look like? I'm not sure I have the answer.
What'd you say, do you have a wrought iron fence, and you have to live stream in front of it with up to thirteen high or fourteen high, except where there's gates?
Okay, how tall is the fence?
The fence would have to be forty-two inches from the, and it's strictly from a safety security standpoint to prevent everybody...
So let's have a living wall that's forty-two inches high, except for where there's gates. I'd be fine with that.
That has to go into the PD document? Does anybody have an idea where?
Page seventy-five. You would probably want to add a, a, an item, an item E to specify that.
And say it again, what it is, forty-two inch?
If that's by walkway, it'd need to be forty-eight, minimum.
And we wouldn't have any walkways right there, so...
They referred to it as a living screen, is that what it was? Living screen?
Okay, forty-two inch living screen, okay.
Living screening is further regulated under the fence standards and the code of ordinances, so if you just refer to it as living screening, there's a lot of detail that goes into how that is supposed to be maintained and how it's supposed to look if you wanted to use that.
Are, are we okay to just say living screen and specify a minimum height?
Yeah, the ordinance actually has a maximum height on it of six feet next to the golf course or any park land. If you wanted to specify a minimum or maximum, that would be a good idea in this case.
So then a minimum of forty-two inches?
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
I'm, I'm tempted to go to page five to deal with hotel unless we have some other things you wanna address before I go there. We can't really pass the PD document without dealing with the hotel, but I guess you could pass, well, we'll, we'll deal with the whole PD document and the, and the ordinance at one time.
I do have a question.
Yes, Tim?
I know, I think that the major problem with, with the driving through is gonna be that main road in front of the hotel. You know, we spend a lot of time on the townhouses, but that main road is, we have to come up with a solution for that. I don't know exactly when we do it, but, you know, we have to do something down by, by the end there, to make sure, because that's, they're just, you talk about, that's a great, that's a great shortcut right there. I mean, we just, we created a great shortcut, we have to do something there. And that, that's...
So anybody got any suggestions of how to deal with that? Yes? All right, good. The architect.
You don't wanna hear about Legacy, but this is how we did it at Legacy. Bishop Drive, Bishop Drive is the people going fifty miles up and down the street. A little stretch, about the same length as this. Two locations, I'm just gonna point.
You can use the mouse and we can see it, but...
He's tall enough to do that.
This area here and this area here.
Right, yep.
We literally raised the street up to curb level. The whole area. So you gotta transition, and then everything around the whole sidewalk, let me see. Yeah. This whole area, right there, that's all raised up to sidewalk level. So it almost like...
A big bump that, that levels out.
It's a big, big bump. And then you gotta transition on all three sides right there. That stops people almost automatically. If you have it at each end...
It's, it's the length of at least the car.
Yes, exactly.
So how do we memorialize that requirement? Or do we?
Well, we can either put it on the site plan, but there is, there is terms in there for slowing, what we got in there for, for pavers and whatever.
Pavers, cobblestones, this would fall under that.
Yes. So we could define it as we gotta at least have two of them at the, at the intersection of the drives to do that. Actually, it's a great amenity anyway, because allows for the handicap access across there very easily.
So would it be appropriate to say that on the, the main drive in front of the hotel to have at a minimum of two of these X terms, whatever we're using the term to describe that?
Right.
All right. Thank you.
That does work, gentlemen, I promise you.
Where should we put that? Now we get to read a hundred pages.
Do we have to put it, or?
We do, we need to.
All right.
We've got residents asking for, cut their issues and...
Let the smart guy on council figure it out.
Would we, would we, Ron, would we put that under page fourteen of the big packet under street paving enhancements?
That would be the, in my opinion, the appropriate place to put it, since that does get into... It's, well, it's referred to as speed control enhancements in this section.
All right.
So would it be appropriate to add a, a Romanet three that would specify the street a minimum of two? Street paving enhancements as defined in Section Two above, but shall be constructed in such a way to calm traffic? Is that fair? I'll, I'll write that, and then we can revisit it.
All right. Where else do we need to deal with things? Hope somebody's looking for those.
Resident had a question, just to get on the record. Who's gonna handle the trash? Is that the town or the POA in the detention area?
Maintenance of the detention area, who's gonna clean it up?
We, we will, if you go... Get all the way down there. Basically, the answer is, we're gonna maintain it, but I have it written up. Had it written up, that, well, we, we're supposed to maintain it, so we have to maintain the facility as part of the overall CCNR that will go with the whole Trophy Club Town Center development.
Now, the CCRs, that includes the townhomes, 'cause they'll probably have their own separate CC, so they'll have, have a double payment.
Potentially, yes.
Can we go to page five that deals with hotels? I don't wanna go too soon, 'cause it's gonna change our discussion.
I did have one townhome question. Sorry, guys. Y'all should've seen my notes. Y'all should've seen my notes from Thursday, it was ridiculous.
No, we, we both mentioned it, but not him.
Can y'all back up to the pay, to the, to the slide that shows the two site plans side by side?
Page four, I think.
We're memorizing the slide numbers now. We're getting, we're getting really good at this.
No, seven, I'm all...
Okay, so the way we, so the way we're defining our townhome areas here is slightly different in that the, the first plan was more specific to the, the placement of the structure in the driveway, and the second plan is just basically showing the lot line minus road and whatnot. And Dennis made a point about how there was articulation before, and there's not now, although I imagine, when it comes down to figuring out where to put structures, there's gonna be some articulation. So my question is, I think there's a desire amongst everyone to, to instill some level of assured articulation, so that you don't have a completely perfect, symmetrical, almost barracks-style straight road, but without getting way off in the weeds here. So my question to you guys and to staff is, do we have a good way to do that? Given that it was kind of expressed previously on the site plan, and we don't have that detail on the new one?
Kind of flowed with the... What would these units right here, bring them down, towards this area that bring the street down? And then you also break this up a little, so it can be farther straight along the road.
About the closest you get to articulation in the townhome standards is E-I-two, it's as decorative building elements, canopies, eaves, covered breezeways, and vestibules associated with townhome residential pedestrian entry, exit, balconies, and bay windows may project up to six feet into the front setback.
So that's...
But it's, it's just a May, it's allowing it to happen, it's not requiring it.
And what that's addressing is encroachment on projections into the setback and not so much the actual structure articulation itself. But I guess you could, you could, if you wanted to add...
That's correct, yeah. For example, single-family front setbacks are usually sacred, they don't allow for any encroachments to maintain the street yard, but in the case of a townhome in this, you know, it, it is allowing for more articulation, 'cause it recognizes the wall effect.
I would talk about all those trees that are gone, but this council...
To, to me, the, to me, the important element isn't necessarily the path of the street. Garrett had a question, are you asking about the, the actual boundary of the structure or the path of the street? To me, the, the important thing is the, the boundary of the structure. So is it, is it appropriate to try to say that there's a required building line articulation, front building line articulation every so many feet or something like that?
I don't know, go ahead. You know, we're still in the design stages of this, so I think what we had discussed with the seller was a specific building pad size to fit a specific product that we think would sell here. And my intention is not to have a straight wall all the way down the road and to have variations from an architectural standpoint. I mean, these are examples of products that we have. So when it comes to those limitations, I think potentially we could cross that bridge maybe in a final plat stage when we submit more of the detailed version of what we were going to do. I don't want to lock in some type of building line here that eliminates from developing the product that would be most successful.
Yeah, and I don't either. Is the final plat an appropriate instrument to accomplish that?
All the final plats going to show you are the setbacks. So no, not really in this case.
Well, it does allow for encroachment up to five feet into the setback.
But the plat won't show any as-built encroachments, it's only going to show the setbacks.
You know, I think the concern, if I am listening to the council, is that, you know, let's take the top picture, for example, that there aren't, one, two, three, there aren't six blocks of that exact product all in a row. I mean, that, you know, that they all face each other, they're all the same, that there's no articulation at all amongst the design, so they're all a little unique to themselves. And it's not just a straight row of thirty-nine of the exact same look or even almost similar. Is that accurate?
Yeah, and I understand your intention isn't to do that. It's not, it's not a more marketable product, but.
And if you are wanting to come up with some type of language, I would default to the landowner on that.
Absolutely, yeah, that's fair.
At this primary stage.
Hey, Ron, just out of curiosity.
Ron, I don't know where we would put that in here.
Look, looking at the site plan, maybe you can answer this question too. When you go back from the first unit along the creek and you go up one, two, three, the fourth, fifth, and sixth, then there's a space, and then seven, eight, and nine. Is that land that's adjacent to the creek flood zone? Would there be a reason why you couldn't step those, the one, two, three, four, five, and six, kind of step them down toward the creek, and then seven, step down, eight, and nine, step down? So you have like a little stair step effect? You could do the same thing on the other side of the street, which would give the street a little bit of a dog leg?
Well, I think to just clarify, these are pad drawings to, they're not wall drawings for the fronts and the sides of the house. These are pad drawings to where we fit different architectural townhomes on each one. So although, although it looks like a straight line right here, this is just the.
I realize that, but if you want to make, move the street as well and provide a stronger visual setback appearance, you have land behind a number of units. And I'm just wondering if that's flood zone or not, where you could bring those buildings back.
Would be the floodplain line. And when we came back with the, when we came through with preliminary plat shortly, that was one of the desires from P&amp;Z and Town Council that all townhome lots remain outside of the floodplain.
Okay, so it is floodplain area.
Yes, you do have a floodplain line that comes back along the creek area.
Is that the little pencil line above the trees that we see?
It's not truly depicted here, but it does come back. There does, it has a little articulation, but we'd have to work with what that floodplain line is as well. Still provide area for the other amenities that's requesting the creek from a pedestrian route. So that, just kind of wanted to be careful that we don't put too many stipulations to where it makes it difficult for the townhome developer, but still works within what you're looking for to stay out of the floodplain and create that.
I was trying to find somebody to move the street around, and that looked like a possibility.
Have you initiated a clomer yet?
We did not anticipate doing a clomer on this site.
All right, Ron, when I was in your office Monday and we were looking at floodplain things, my impression was that their proposed plan was going to cause the floodplain line on the residential side of lot one twenty-one, one twenty, and so on, to actually encroach more in their property based on what was drawn. Is that, it's not on our plan tonight. Where did we see that and why did I have that concern?
That was in the flood and drainage study that was provided with the preliminary plat, which is required to be provided for the site. And I would ask the applicant's engineer to further elaborate on what that, what that means as to what we saw in the flood study with the floodplain line on the south affecting the lots of the existing subdivision to the south.
To speak, to speak on the floodplain line, at this time, we're not anticipating doing any reclamation. We did study the Gulf Course Creek and have submitted full drainage study. We have two conditions. We have the existing FEMA as well as the fully developed conditions, which reflect everything coming from fully developed from West Lake. At this time, we're not reflecting anything. We do have two different lines shown, one of where FEMA currently shows the floodplain, and the second is where it is depicted based off our topography that we did.
Okay, so that's where I saw the difference is that if, if the full stream of water coming from West Lake made it encroach on those lots.
Correct. If, if we like to proceed, proceed with a clomer and reclaim part of that to move it back to match actual topography out on site, we could, that line was depicted on the site. At this point in time, we do not want to proceed with a clomer to reclaim a part of that floodplain and correct that flood delineation.
So here's my problem. I don't want to prove anything that is going to affect those citizens because they hadn't been notified that the floodplain is going to change. So how do you solve that problem for me?
And we're not changing the floodplain.
Based on your study, you are.
That would be fully developed conditions that we do not have any impact. And that would be FEMA could come back and update their existing study at a later date to reflect fully developed conditions from West Lake.
Okay, so that creek has water flowing from PD thirty, does it not?
That is correct.
Okay, so you control part of it, right?
That is why we put detention in, yes.
Okay, but your detention, you're not taking all the water down those townhomes to detention?
We are, we are sizing the detention so the amount of water flowing into Gulf Course Creek does not exceed existing conditions today.
But the place at which I'm talking about.
Correct.
Is way away from your detention pond.
Correct.
Your detention pond isn't going to help me back here.
What you have, what we have to do is we have to size the detention accordingly to account for what bypasses the pond. So you make your pond bigger to, to size what actually bypasses and does not enter your detention facility.
Okay, I still disagree with you. And I'm just going to tell you this really point blank. I'm voting no tonight on everything unless you solve that problem for me and prove those homes won't be affected. Is that clear?
Yes, sir.
All right, so you got thirty minutes to solve the problem for me.
Which the.
You're going to get a no vote from me.
The drainage study, and we have submitted a drainage study to Mr. Rutledge. It has been reviewed and he can further expand on what we've submitted, but we are not increasing any flows.
You are. Okay, you can say that, but water's going to flow down that street and water's going to flow between those townhomes.
Correct.
Into the creek. It's not going to go to your detention. Therefore, you did increase the water in the creek by this development, in my opinion. And I'm going to argue with you about that until I'm blue in the face.
Which we have oversized the detention to accommodate for that extra flow releasing off the site.
Tom, you want to talk?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, let Tom talk.
Well, I don't know if I want to, but.
You can see I'm passionate.
I know, because now I'm stepping down into it. There's a couple of little details here that, that I want to explain to you. The FEMA map is not matching the topography.
Right.
We have a, we have a dilemma. When we first looked at this, that was one of the things that we talked to Burry about was whether or not to do a lomer. And so we told him, study it. We want you guys to still study it. Let's see what, once you survey the creek and do, and do the topography, you run a model and let's see how it lines up with FEMA. FEMA has not, I guess you could say, has not accurately mapped it to, to reflect what's really on the ground. So I got with my hydrology engineers because Burry asked for us to give them some direction on that. And so we looked at that. Every city takes a different approach to this. City of Fort Worth, for example, one of your bigger cities, when they see that the conditions mapped in by FEMA do not match actual conditions, they make you file a lomer. If we file a lomer, technically, it's going to move the floodplain onto those residents. And so they're going to get all excited saying, well, because of your development, you pushed the floodplain higher onto my property. Well, technically, it's really higher on their property, it's just not reflected on the FEMA maps that way. City of South Lake takes the approach, don't mess with it. That's what FEMA's showing. As long as we've studied it and we know that, that it has not impacted the residents across the street and we've been able to document that by their study and the models that they've given us, then we're, we're okay with that. And that's the South Lake's approach. Technically, you're correct, there will be some water that runs into the creek. The criteria we use is they cannot raise the water surface elevation one tenth above what is there now. And so we will make them, whatever will go into that relative to the larger watershed upstream of this is, is pretty miniscule over the, it's like a drop in the ocean. But the criteria is you cannot raise the water surface elevation on the neighbors across there. So we would still require that they prove that out. So I think maybe our bigger dilemma is, are we going to do a lomer or not do a lomer? And we've, we've taken the approach of, well, let's not do the lomer just simply because that pushes the floodplain. Even if this development wasn't there and we did the lomer, you would still push the floodplain over onto those residents just because of the way FEMA. It's not a studied stream. It's an approximated floodplain, and that's the way they've got it. But now we go in and we really study it, we get it, we get it nailed down by the study, the floodplain is going to push over onto them. Now, he can reclaim it and it actually can help him, but it actually hurts them and it's of no fault of the development.
Garrett?
Let me, can you go to the, the site plan that you're proposing right now? And maybe this answers your question, Nick, and this is the way I would. This is not my development, so I'm not as familiar, but maybe this will help answer your question. Okay, yeah, go back. So your concern is that the amount of water that's being dumped in the creek increases. And your concern is the retention pond is down here on the right side of the page, but yet you're going to get runoff. You're right, you're absolutely right. But you need to think about it this way. Currently, this entire piece of land sheet drains into that creek. So you have a tremendous amount of water. What you're doing is, my guess, is somewhere behind this hotel in this parking area, all that water is being captured and drug into your pond. So really, the amount of sheet draining you're going to have is minimal and it's going to come from the townhome area. So if you look at what, the amount of runoff that's coming from that townhome area is probably about equal to amount of the entire development right now. So you're going to catch all that rain and probably even down the street is going to run into detention. And so I would argue that it, it should be minimal, but you are right, there's going to be some runoff in there. But I would think that compared to the overall project sheet draining into there, the amount of runoff from those townhomes will be relatively minimal. So you're going to catch most of the water there, but I think you're right, Nick. You're going to get runoff, but I don't think in any way it could be any more runoff than you have today.
All right, I think I have, I think I hear what each of you have said and I think I, I can explain what you're saying in a way that, that you might be able to agree with what he's saying. Maybe not, we'll see. But when he says that they're not changing the runoff into the creek due to the detention area, that is measured by the amount of runoff as it exits the property, not the amount of runoff that gets into the creek at any point. Your point is saying, obviously, like Garrett just said, and it's true, portions all along behind those townhomes will get more water into the creek right there than they do today because it's hard, going to be hard up, up the hill there. But his point is, is that all the other stuff that's been paved over, up above it, I'm slowing down up here at the, at the end downstream. You're slowing it down so that by the time the water as a whole unit exits the property, it's all exiting the property at an unchanged volume, as if it had all been sheet draining, all spread out like Garrett said. Is that, is that accurate?
And, and let me kind of expand a little bit here. Overall, on the site, from the corner of one fourteen all the way down to Indian Creek at that corner, you have roughly about thirty-two feet of fall. So you have quite a bit of slope. Now, right now, there's going to be, everything sheet flows from there into the creek to take existing conditions. As part of our improvements, we're going to put in underground storm that's going to take water to the pond. So under fully developed, once the site's fully developed, everything, the only part that's going to be directly sheet flowing into the pond or into, sorry, into the creek is probably going to be maybe the townhome lots. The complete townhome lots to three quarters of the townhome lot. That's going to be the only part that's draining directly into the Gulf Course Creek. Everything else, the rest of the remainder, is going to be piped and conveyed into the detention facility through underground storm system. So that's how we're capturing most and routing a majority of that water into the detention area through underground storm. So you're.
That's a control release.
That's a control release. We'll have a staged outfall structure that releases at a two-year rainfall event, a ten-year rainfall event, a hundred-year rainfall event that matches and mimics existing conditions today that does not release more water into the Gulf Course Creek than what does under existing conditions today being fully undeveloped. Now, with the original PD, this PD, we still had the same exact conditions for detention. The detention, we still have to provide detention because the city ordinance states that you cannot adversely affect residents downstream. We'd still have to provide detention in the same manner to not adversely affect residents downstream. So we, we'd still have to provide a detention and reduce the, reduce the amount of runoff from the site in the same exact manner. And we'd still have the underground storm system. There'd still be the water running off of the townhome lots, same amount of water.
You'll actually get less silt in your ponds, Nick.
That remains to be seen.
Well, it'll get captured in that.
Right, sure. All right, anybody else? Yes, Dennis? I'm staying on the subject of the no floodplain on lots, on these townhome lots. As I've seen the, going to Commissioner, Councilman Parrow, the front townhome lots along one fourteen were not staggered at the time because of the floodplain in the creek. The other is, these lots as proposed have some depth to them that could, they could, the rear lines could be staggered to take them, those three or four lots out of the floodplain. As far as staggering and articulating the front elevations, we do that consistently in zoning, not in plating. We have it in Highlands on Lennar. We had it back in the days when we did Highlands, we had townhomes, it was in there. I believe it's in the Villas. So it's normal for Trophy Club to require some type of articulation in the elevation front and building, I'm going to use the word building lines, okay? And if you look at the two different, or the three different, if I can get to them. Bear with me. I'm not as fast as, okay. The bottom, the bottom left, that's a straight line. All those garages doors are in a straight line down the street. The bottom right, there is some articulation, but, you know, we don't know the fronts. But the top has some articulations. It appears to be per, per home. Uh, but the top has some articulations. It appears to be per, um, per home. And each one of these is individual, uh, individually, uh, plated for per lot. So I would request that you put some type of articulation in your motion. Thank you.
All right. Uh, does anybody want to react to that articulation issue? Get it done?
Well, looking at, looking at where we would put it, and Mr. Dahlstrom made, made a comment a little while ago. So where would we put it? The question is, the answer is that there would, there's a Section Five Townhome Residential Requirements, but, the sections involving setbacks, Section E, which covers setbacks, which is where this would apply, front setbacks, were, there's no changes to, so, uh, I'm, I think that, I'm guessing, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe your contention is that we're not really up for considering a change to that at this point, right?
That's exactly right. It wasn't noticed in the public notice.
Yeah. So, that may be something that we want to just, um, find a, find a way to, find a way to deal with. I do think it's an important design aspect that, that, that people are going to, going to want to have a, some, some sort of assurance on, so.
Ron, do we have anything in our code of ordinances that discusses articulation? Or, I know, I mean, I, I, I think Commissioner Sheridan brings up a good point. I know in the Highlands, it's very specific about what each house can look like and the, and the spacing between each. And we've even had where we've had to go back and make people change pitches of roofs because they were, it was too similar to the house next door across the street. And so I, I'm just wondering if there's, there's anything in our, I know we're pretty specific in some of those PDs, but I don't know if we have anything that we could fall back on in our code of ordinances.
Not the straight-up or, overall ordinance, uh, PD twenty-seven, like they were talking about, has a lot of that in it. Um, but our underlying ordinance doesn't do that.
Okay, Dennis?
Um, page, um, fifty-six. Item B, Townhome Residential Maximum Depth Density. May I recommend that the, the maximum number of townhome, uh, townhouse units is thirty-nine staggered? Because that, that would be within the published, um, uh-
Language.
Language. Thank you.
So, there was an agreement that on page fifty-six, item- B? Okay?
Townhome residential requirements subsection B.
Okay. Staggered units. All right. Anything else before I go to hotels? Brilon, this is your chance.
My notepad is cleared.
Okay. So let's go to page five, or maybe it's page five. I guess I better go look at the- The big, the big book, I think, but it's also the little one, I think, but, same page, yeah. All right, um, I have a couple of comments. Under item thirteen, what I understand is that there was the addition in Roman numeral four to add exception by sup on the square foot of meeting space. Is that right? And there was the agreement on item V, five, no fewer than a hundred and fifty rooms, exception by sup. Both of those affecting full service. Is that right? And then item fourteen. Was fourteen added totally? No, it wasn't, was it?
Yes.
No, sir.
Added totally, okay. So you're defining hotel limited service. And you're saying with no fewer than a hundred and five rooms, uh, and, or, wait a minute. Or less than two thousand square feet of meeting area. The way I read that, the or is not an and.
I think Dennis's comment at the hour six of the six-hour meeting was that, that was supposed to say nor. So it would say no fewer than a hundred and five rooms, nor less than two thousand square feet. And that's just a very, I mean, Ron was, Ron's fingers were smoking, so it's one letter.
Okay, I read it. Proves I looked at it. All right, there are a couple of things that I would like to see discussed and potentially added to the, item fourteen there, paragraph fourteen. And one of those to specify Class A finishes, and the other one to specify a, uh, STC minimum of sixty between the units and the floors. Yeah, I'm sorry, between the wall and the floors. Why did I say units? Okay, units, floor, wall, yeah. All right. Any comments?
We are told that that is a design term.
Do we have a definition of what Class A finishes are, Mayor?
It's Universal Building Code, defined.
Universal.
International, maybe, or universal, or whatever.
IBC?
IBC, yes.
IBC.
I'll Google it.
Google it.
Might be wrong, maybe we binged it.
Or binged it, or whatever. So Nina's back there binging it or Googling it also. Do you have Siri? Just ask Siri. Or, go Google. Now my phone just woke up.
Do we talk about the, the rooms now?
That's where I'm headed. They're, they're looking it up. I challenged them now. Interior was my intent. Yes. But good point.
I see an interior finishes definition in International Code Council. I'm making sure that this is pertinent first, though.
Don't find me wrong.
I'm seeing it as a, as a, um, as a, as a, as a flame spread and smoke developed parameter for wall and ceiling finishes.
My understanding was that it affected noise abatement between floors and walls. Oh, that's the sixty. I'm sorry, not Class A finishes. I'm sorry. Sixty did that, but, I'm sorry.
That, that Class A, it's the, I didn't, you threw me for a curve too, but, uh, it's the flame spread, and that's going to be required anyway.
Okay, so that's redundant, okay.
Okay. All right.
No.
All right. So what about the STC minimum of sixty? Noise baffling? She's asking, do we have a standard specified in that in Trophy Club? I don't believe so.
Probably not. They would have to be present in those PDs.
We would defer to the, the building code for standard, commercial, um, noise baffling.
No laughing at me, Pat.
It looks like it's a gypsum wall assembly, but we're just trying to double check.
Half inch on both, double on both sides.
I just want to see if there's something that's required in between, but I, we lost our connection.
Oh, no, you lost your wireless. We do it all, every time during council. Maybe about this time.
Well, STCs does sound for, sa, sa, excuse me, it's getting late. It's Sound Transmission Class is what it is short for. Uh, what we're trying to find is any particular universal code that it would be tied to, and I'm not finding it.
The, I, it's a, per Wikipedia.
That's where I'm at.
Is that where you're, I mean, the standard, a standard baseline wall is an STC of thirty-three. And that is a standard interior home wall, which is one sheet of half-inch drywall on either side of a wood stud frame. Uh, will have an STC of about thirty-three. So if you start increasing that, you start adding absorptive, absorptive insulation, fiberglass batts, blow-in cellulose, recycled cotton denim batts, and the wall cavity, which will increase the STC, um, the thirty-six to thirty-nine, uh, for fiberglass into more than fifty with cotton denim, depending on stud and screw spacing. Uh, doubling up the drywall in addition to fiberglass insulation can yield forty-one to forty-five, provided the wall gaps and penetrations are sealed properly.
Sixty may be unrealistic.
That seems a little excessive for a hotel.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I would have concerns about the commercial viability of, of sixty-plus. Just, just for an example, reading from the source that Stephen has, it lists an STC of forty-five as loud speech not audible, and this is the funny part, ninety percent of statistical population not annoyed. Was there sample taken in Trophy Club? I don't know. So, yeah.
Yeah, if you go at what can be heard at sixty-plus, it's superior soundproofing, most sounds inaudible. So for sixty-three, it says a double layer of half-inch drywall on each side on double wood metal stud walls spaced one inch apart, double bat insulation.
What does a Hampton have right now?
I don't have the answer to that.
It's just standard wall with, they do have the interior walls insulated, but it's just bat, fiberglass bats.
Say, I stay at Hampton a lot, I don't-
Yeah, and we have no issues at all.
With that, the batting, standard batting that you would have put there?
With what we currently have at Hampton. I, I don't know, you know, exactly what we have, but with what we have there.
We're not building it. A business person has to build it. We don't get to build it.
And sound still travels the same, so we have no issue at Hampton. We will not have an issue at Hyatt Place regardless of the level of hotel.
So, here, here's something. What can be heard, and it says forty is the onset of quote, privacy. And at thirty-nine, in terms of partition type, it says single layer of half-inch drywall on each side, wood studs, fiberglass insulation.
That's what Hampton is. They've got the, they've got the fiberglass on the interior walls.
Okay.
The international code says airborne sound insulation for wall and floor ceiling assemblies shall meet a sound transmission class rating of forty-five. That's the code.
Okay, so I guess what I'm trying to do here, not saying that you won't build a hotel, but we have no guarantee you're going to build a hotel. Next person may build something else. I want something in there that says you're going to do the quality that we have at the Hampton Inn. So, how do we put that? Is that saying a STC of forty? Or is that saying fiberglass insulation between walls? What is that that'll make somebody do it?
I don't have enough knowledge to give you the specifics.
It would really just have to be minimum code requirements.
I don't remember that.
Right.
That's not what people wanted for that hotel. They did not want minimum code requirements. They wanted upscale hotel. You know, value place. They didn't have minimum code requirements.
Tim, I would, I would play devil's advocate and argue if this was a full-service hotel with a hundred and fifty rooms, they would have to follow code requirements for the sound quality between rooms, so.
What, are you saying whether it was a hundred and fifty or a hundred and five, they all had to follow it?
Right.
What I'm saying is they all have to follow minimum. I'm saying if there's a hundred and fifty, I'm willing to bet that they put a little more into the rooms, the soundproofing, the finishes, as opposed to something that's a hundred.
Mayor, I did find where the Uniform Building Code does require a minimum of fifty for hotels.
Minimum of fifty.
This is the UBC, though. Not many cities use the UBC, and I can't find anything in the ICC, which is what Trophy Club uses.
All right, so that solves my concern. Is that right?
Yeah.
Well, we're not under the UBC, but-
Oh.
And it's, it's, the UBC, even that requirement in the UBC is selectively enforced by the cities that do utilize it. Well, for the UBC, it's all R, R-class, including hotels.
All right, so if we were going to do something, we need to do it here, not the SUP. Is that right? That's, that's the question. Do I need to do it here at the SUP?
You could do it both.
Do it both?
Or, either or, I should say.
Oh, okay, either.
I've got a question. At the, at the P and Z meeting, um, the other guy, he, he said that Hyatt Place, they do a full-service breakfast. Is that true?
It's a full hot breakfast, similar to what we have at Hampton.
So is that something that we could require? Because obviously, Hyatt Place is not going to give you a full-service breakfast.
I have an, I have a, I have an idea for that. And, and I actually had it in my notes for the sup discussion, which will take place sometime on Thursday or Friday, um, at this rate. And, and that is that Nina said, in her, one of her very first comments tonight, she said that they maintain a full-service kitchen. That seems to me like something that if we want to, we're, what we're doing here is creating a definite- That seems to me like something that if we want to, we're, what we're doing here is creating a definition for a limited service hotel that didn't previously exist. And so if the goal is to try to raise that level, that seems like a reasonable request, a full-service kitchen. She's already made the point that they intend to operate that with what they're seeking, so it seems like we have a match at them, with the market. My goal for this entire discussion about the hotel is to find an appropriate match for the market, because the definition of full service, as provided in the current zoning, clearly does not match the market. And if we don't give someone an opportunity to build a potential success, some doofus who doesn't know what he's doing is going to come try to build a full-service hotel here, and what happens when doofuses who don't know what they're doing try to build a full-service hotel in Trophy Club? You get the Holiday Inn.
I knew that answer.
So, full, how about full-service kitchen? Does that make, am I right, and did I, I hope I didn't put words in your mouth?
No, absolutely. Just for terminology purposes, we're building a prototypical Hyatt Place. The Hyatt Places I've toured have a, a full commercial kitchen. They provide meals, they sell meals. Quick, prepared meals, basically, is what they sell. Um, I'm not certain that I'm comfortable with full-service kitchen. I don't know, I mean, how do we define that?
So a commercial kitchen is a better, a better way to put that. Maybe I picked the wrong word when I wrote down what you said.
Kitchen.
Okay.
Do, do they have things that you don't have at Hampton? Maybe that's what you need to tell us, so that we can add that to the document.
Right. And I would have to get that information for you. Definitely, they have items that we don't have at Hampton. I mean, it's three times the size. It's, it's a large kitchen. Um, specifics I would have to get for you.
So how many stories is your hundred and five-room proposal?
Um, we're pretty early in the planning stages, but we anticipate four stories.
And do we have a limit on that, Ron? Do we have a limit on what the hotel can be?
Six.
In the PD now? Six?
But you can define it under limited service.
Yeah, because that's six for a.
That's for a full service.
Full-service hotel, so you could, that's another angle you could take.
All right. So do, do you think you're comfortable with some limitation on floors?
Limitation on?
Saying four floors, not six, not five?
Um, I prefer not to, because there's a chance that we may, I mean, we anticipate doing a wood frame construction.
That's four stor, that's four stories.
Stories, right.
If you're five, you got to go to something else.
Possibly, not on the entire building, possibly on certain floors. Maybe defer to, yeah, so we would have to, you know, we haven't engaged our architect yet, but we would have to look at our options.
Sorry?
Yeah, if we limit the height of the building, then it's going to limit them on what they can do. What if they decide in their market study that it should be a hundred and twenty-five rooms? Hundred and forty rooms, and now we got to come back and talk about whether it's four stories or six stories.
So why did the presentation say Nilo with Hyatt?
It was Aloft.
Aloft, I mean, okay.
Aloft, yeah. We, pending approval, we are putting in the application Hyatt, Hyatt Place. That's our number one choice. If there, for any reason, there's anything that happens, Aloft would be our second choice.
Okay.
It's the same, um, it's an upscale, similar boutique-style hotel.
Okay. All right, yes, Greg?
At the P and Z meeting, Patel, and if I'm pronouncing his name wrong, I apologize, but he mentioned about having a bar with peanuts, or lovingly referred to as a peanuts bar. How about the word lounge? Are you definitely going to have that in there?
There will be, and it's considered a gallery, uh, under the Hyatt Place terminology. It's an area that serves the food that we spoke about and drinks.
So one of the things to prevent someone else coming in, should we put the word lounge? Would that be permissible?
What are we trying to accomplish?
Are you attempting that they require, do you want to make sure that they have a lounge? Because there's nothing, there's nothing that defines that in the definition of limited service right now, so.
No, I'm saying, can we, or should we put that in?
A requirement for a lounge? That seems reasonable.
If a lounge involves the, or implies the sale of alcohol, just keep in mind a separate alcohol SUP is required for any alcohol sales, period. So that's going to be another discretionary decision on the part of council.
So what would be a better, what would be a better, a better term in the industry to describe this area? If, if for some reason the alcohol sales portion didn't fall through, lounge is the wrong word, what would be? You said gallery earlier, is that an industry-accepted term?
It's not an industry term, it's a Hyatt Place term. Uh, it's considered a gallery. I think that's too specific for, for this purpose. We consider it a lounge or a bar in, in industry terms.
Are you saying there's a holdup because we, because of the alcohol sales?
It's just going to require a special use, or specific use permit to be granted by the council.
It just has to come back to us.
That's correct.
I don't see us voting no to alcohol.
Boy, that's true. Especially not after this week.
Lot less guys driving drunk.
Okay. All right, so did anybody else have any discussion they wanted to have about the hotel and placing any thing in limited service definition?
Sorry it took me a minute to find it, but our, um, adopted code, the minimum is STC fifty, so we're in good shape on that.
That's great.
Okay.
So, so.
I was close. I, I said fifty, didn't I? It just sounded like sixty.
We all learned something. Can all go home and say we learned something tonight. So if it's appropriate, this is a question for, uh, all, the, those of you who know the wording here. If, if we want to add a requirement for a lounge, if, if an applicant builds a building, operates a lounge, we say in this zoning document that a lounge is required. Nothing in this zoning document says they have to be what they have to serve. If some, if, if we're all hit by a bus tomorrow and someone denies us up for alcohol sales, would they be, because we use the word lounge, would they be in violation of, of the zoning? Or if so, we could put a caveat in here.
There'd have to be a definition of lounge. I mean, there's, there's hookah lounges, so.
Indeed, there are.
Are you using it interchangeably with a lobby?
No. Uh, you could sit down, have a nice drink, and watch television, the, the ballgame, that kind of stuff. Have a little peanuts. Maybe some pretzels.
Yeah.
Popcorn.
I don't know how many of you have been in the Hampton Inn and suites, but, I mean, you could consider it a lounge area, yeah.
I'll say for me, I know what you're attempting to accomplish. My hope is that the, if we add a requirement for a commercial kitchen, that, 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 that negates the need to try to do this, given that there's not an industry-accepted term to describe what we want. I don't want to create, again, an adverse condition, because we're trying to micromanage something. I think we know where we're going. I'm happy with using the commercial kitchen requirement as a way to get us there personally.
What's the definition of a commercial kitchen? A four-burner stove?
With seventeen micro.
There's a, probably a code, code definition of commercial kitchen, right, right, Pat?
If they put a commercial stove in it, then we'd require a, a hood, and that, that triggers it for us.
And I'm not certain that the Hyatt Place kitchen has a stove and hood.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It, uh, uh, once you go to that route, it's very expensive to add a vented hood to a commercial.
For the health code, it's a three-compartment sink, and then that triggers in, indirect waste.
We're not against you coming. We're just trying to make sure we get quality in case things fall apart.
Can I, can I ask the question again, and I mean sincerely?
Please do.
Where, where are we trying to get to with this? What's the end goal? Again, is to have what?
We've added to the PD a definition for limited service.
Right.
It's relatively vague, and lim, it doesn't limit very much if we, that, that would not preclude, I don't think, a value place-type person coming in.
Right. So.
That's assuming they could afford the land and all those other things.
So let me ask you a question. If, if they have to do a sup, that means they have to bring back to us, I think if I remember what P and Z said, actually, they said the sign. It says determine the name on it. So are we all comfortable with the two?
They said we could not do that.
No, I think we could do that, right? In P and Z, did you guys specify signage and branding on the, in the sup? Didn't you?
No, we're not, zoning does not designate operator. But in a, um, what we were talking about is we could require it in a site plan, but as of right now, unless otherwise said, the site plan's not coming back to us. It's going to be staff-approved. And in the site plan, you have design criteria, which has signs, which if it says, that's, I think, Ron, wasn't that where the conversation was going?
Yes, the, similar to PD twenty-five, which contains all of our hotels, I think, right now. PD twenty-five requires that, uh, all the site plans be approved as an amendment to the PD twenty-five ordinance. Therefore, Hampton Inn, uh, Value Place, had to bring in, um, all of their site plans and everything specifically to be approved by council. So that included the signage as well as the elevations, so those sign, for example, Value Place, the signage is locked in right now in the approving ordinance as Value Place, and they've already inquired the staff about possibly changing that signage. It's going to require an amendment to the ordinance. Now, it doesn't mean, you know, it, it gives you some discretion, because it does have to come back through council to be approved, but when you lock in the elevations and the signage, that means if it ever does change, um, to a, a different brand or different owner, that it would have to come back through simply by virtue of having to approve the new sign sets.
No, but that's specifically PD twenty-five. That we're, we're in PD thirty, which has different rules and different processes.
But with the.
Not to be disagree with, but if it's just a basic site plan for that particular lot of the hotel, and our site plan requirements, even in PD thirty, require, uh, design, uh, design parts.
But the site plan would be approved as a, as an exhibit to the, it would be, it would come back through as an amendment to the SUP ordinance that you would approve tonight, and then that amended ordinance would contain all of those exhibits as elevations of site plan exhibits as required under the site plan regulations and the code of ordinances.
Which, which unless specified, specifically specified, would be, uh, in the process, would be a staff approval.
No, that would require council approval, the way it's currently proposed.
Okay, currently proposed. Okay, but that's another conversation, uh, the next agenda item, correct?
Correct.
All right, so I have four hands that are, when council wants to speak. Ryland's first, Phillip second, Greg's third, Garrett's fourth.
So.
Did I miss anyone?
Um, we have a definition for limited service hotel. That's what we're workshopping right now. Do we, I don't remember seeing this. I know it's in here. I would just like for someone to tell me where. Where do, where do we have a table, uh, that says that obvious, that a limited service hotel requires a sup as an, as an allowed use?
It is on. Page nine. Under Development Standards A1 Residential.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. All right, so I just wanted to make sure that was there before I said this, which is, we have, we have entitled uses, and we have uses that require sup. A lot of what we're trying to accomplish here is the reason why we have a sup is you want some level of, level of comfort with the applicant, that there's certain things that may be nebulous or difficult to define, and you're trying to ascertain some level of faith that the applicant is going to see that through. I have some thoughts on the sup when we get there to help with that. That said, I, the reason, to, to reset us on, if people are wondering where we're trying to go, we want to make sure that this limited service definition is, isn't too broad, so that if we get a, an applicant way down the road that has forgotten the lessons of the Value Place and just raises their hand for a sup, they, they mess it up. We don't, you know, we don't want to open that door. It's, it's a, it's a, it's, it's something that happened, you know.
Let, let me ask this question, and maybe I'm, maybe because it's late and I'm not thinking properly. Why couldn't we do an SUP for anything that deviates from a full-service hotel definition as currently defined? So if you wanted to do something different than your SUP, would we have to reflect those changes that you want? In other words, we add the provision that the SUP, anything less than these minimum requirements would require an SUP, uh, approved by, um, the council. And then that, that gets specifics to where you are specifically dealing with a client, and they're bringing you a proposal of exactly what they want to build. And that removes us defining what a limited service is, or it defines, it, I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm off base.
Or, or if.
I'm just trying to think of something that's simpler than what we're trying to do right now.
I know Garrett's got something, so let him go. He's got it.
I got it.
Can we do this? We are allowed to define what limited service hotel is, right? That's what we're talking about. So why don't we make the definition of limited service hotel a prototypical Hyatt Place or Aloft, period? And if it doesn't become one of those things, it defaults right back to a full-service hotel.
Is that where you were?
I mean, that's what you guys are proposing, and that's what we're willing to accept. And if it doesn't come out to be that, then let's start the debate back over again. If we can define it as whatever we want to define it as, why can't we make that the definition?
I would add, maybe, that adheres to the masonry requirements or whatever it is located within the PD.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think it would have to fall within the PDs, but.
I just want to make sure that that's.
Make the definition.
The name of the.
Prototypical Hyatt Place or prototypical Aloft.
I, I was going to respond to Mr. Seidel's, the first question about, uh, you requiring an SUP for anything that's not a, the, the issue tonight, the second case, is for, specifically for a limited purpose.
Right.
So we couldn't.
Couldn't hear it.
Right. Because I think that, that came up with the P and Z.
But to your point, Stephen, that is true, and, and if, and under that line of thinking, the definition of limited service as, as recommended by P and Z and the applicant and their work on Thursday is leading us down the right road. The question is, is there anything here we want to add to further protect ourselves? I don't think, um, I feel like I've heard somewhere that specifying brands is not a, not a good look, and my attorney is saying that is true. Is that?
Well, we don't really know what prototypical means.
It's hard to define.
I mean, I don't think you know what, what the standards all are for a prototypical Hyatt Place or Aloft, so. I mean, I think you headed the right direction. It's just a matter of deciding what all you want to add in. And so far, we've got the lobby, the minimum three hundred square foot, the onsite staff required, commercial kitchen, STC of fifty. I mean, those are the things. You can add other things in your SUP if, if you're going to allow this thing to come in, because all you're doing, here's a definition, and your regulation just says they're allowed by SUP. So as long as you have reasonable regulations related to, you know, common public health concerns and surrounding uses, then you're going to be fine on your SUP. But right now, we're just trying to get, I think, the definition of what you believe a limited purpose hotel is for purposes of someone being able to come in, file an application, and ask for an SUP.
Right, and my only point is this, we can't agree on what a commercial kitchen is or a lounge is. So why don't we just say we are all okay with a Hyatt Place hotel or Aloft? If the developer's willing to agree with that, and we're willing to agree with that, I don't know why we're, I don't know, I mean. Seems real simple.
Yeah, I, I would, I'm not comfortable. I think that what we're trying, what originally was trying to accomplish here is a full-service hotel, right? So I'm not comfortable, to be honest with you, with a hundred and five rooms. I would, I would rather push that up to one-twenty. And the reason I say that is because Value Place has a hundred and twenty-one. Uh, Holiday Inn has a hundred and twenty-three, Homewood a hundred and ten. So a hundred and five puts it really at the bottom of, of those hotels. So I think that this, I think what we're trying to accomplish here is something a little nicer than what we have on, uh, Trophy Wood. And so I think that it, it behooves us to do a little more, uh, than a hundred and five. So I would suggest a hundred and twenty.
If I can respond to that.
Please.
I, I don't think that room count necessarily correlates to quality of the product. You know, there's Sheratons out there that are in the hundred-room range, so, so I, I disagree with that. I honestly don't think we'll do a hundred and five rooms. I think we'll do closer to a hundred and ten or a hundred and fifteen mark. But I don't want to commit myself to a hundred and twenty if the site plan and the layout that we come up with isn't conducive to that. You know, we might. You know, we might have increased costs to have to go up to five or six stories if we, um, commit to a room count like that. So, um, I guess that's my feedback on that.
So could you add to the definition of limited service? No fewer than a hundred and five rooms, or no fewer than a hundred and X rooms, whatever that is, except by SUP? In other words, an exception.
No fewer than a hundred and five?
No fewer than a hundred and ten or something that she's saying.
Saying a hundred and five.
Well, but I think what Nick is saying is that if you, if we followed your proposal, which was to change its definition to one twenty, her sup that we're gonna hear later tonight is still valid in that context. And then, cause-
An exception to something lower than a hundred and twenty.
I don't wanna get into that, that discussion yet, but there's a reason why that might be valid in this case, which is the case you're making, which is the case that will be made in the next agenda item, I'm sure, but.
I, I think-
So make it one twenty.
Yeah, because I think the, the question is, is if your deal falls through for whatever reason, now we're stuck with one oh five, which we, we know you, we have a relationship with you because you located a facility in town. But if for some reason your contract doesn't work out, or whatever, doesn't happen, then we're with, uh, a definition that we aren't maybe as comfortable with.
So we may wanna go even higher, and, and then do what Nick said as far as the SUP.
All right.
Yeah.
So, other than the correction to nor, as opposed to or. And sounds like we don't have to add anything about finish our STC. That's taken care of. Uh, we're down to room and or kitchen, both kind of thing. Even though kitchen maybe makes it difficult too, if it says commercial or something like that, so.
Right, and, and the definition as, as agreed upon last Thursday by P and Z and the applicant, did include the phrase select food service, which the developer, Parish, did say that that was a term of art that was appropriate in this context. So I'm comfortable with that, based on that Thursday discussion as well, personally.
Anybody else wanna comment on that particular thing about the kitchen? Select food service. Everybody okay? Nobody says anything, all right, what about rooms? Phillip, you gonna make any suggestion, or?
I, I suggested one, one twenty, but I think you should probably go higher and then require, you know, an SUP to come before us, like what we have next, to request anything lower. That would keep out what we don't want.
All right, comment, council, where do you, where do you sit?
I'll, I'll-
I agree with that.
How many rooms does, uh, Value Place have?
One twenty-one.
So I mean, that just kills your argument of more rooms equals higher quality.
I'm not saying it's higher quality, but you're trying to limit who can come in here. So if you say there's, you have to have three hundred rooms, then they have to come with an SUP. They're not gonna come and build three hundred rooms.
I, I don't disagree, I mean, I'm okay with the one twenty, I'm just trying to argue with you about something tonight. Cause we haven't-
You said what you need to argue with me, that's gonna be bad.
I, I, I like where we're headed, um, given the room counts of the other hotels, one twenty might be a shade too low. I have, with this particular developer and their track, track record, this applicant, Kria, and their track record in town, I'm gonna be open to hearing their case, for sure. So don't, that's not really what we're talking about right now. So I, I would support that, but with a one thirty or one thirty-five or whatever, I mean-
Keep it at that full service.
Or keep it at one fifty, because either way, it triggers a sup, and a sup is a sup.
So are you saying take the number of rooms out of the limited service? We have to have the limited service definition there, is my understanding.
Yes, we do, we do, we have to have limited services.
We have a sup?
Yes.
Oh, because this is the PD, you're right.
So, so we could just strike the room requirement from the definition.
But why not just put one there?
Or put one fifty, just put one fifty.
Put, put one fifty in one of the serves.
All right.
And that it can go down with a-
Do, do all the applicants understand what we're trying to do? And have any questions or concerns you wanna make comments about?
So that was one fifty, I, I wasn't-
One fifty is the last comment.
Excepting with the SUP.
Right. If we get through this, we're going to an SUP. By eleven thirty. Everybody okay? All right, so, um, I would, um, we have a, I've been on this so long, I can't even remember what we got. Do we have a, we have an ordinance for this, don't we? Ordinance twenty sixteen dash eleven, P and Z? All right, so, um, do we need to approve the amendments to the PD first? And then pass the ordinance?
Well, you're approving amendments probably to exhibit B, so that we're all clear on what they are, and then you can approve the ordinance.
Okay, so approve amendments to exhibit B.
Yes.
Of PD thirty, of, well, of twenty sixteen eleven.
What I was suggesting earlier, Mayor, was that we just, I mean, I've been writing these down, I'm sure Mr. Dollstrom's been writing them down, Ron's been writing them down.
Ryland's been writing them down.
Go through and-
That's what I'm gonna do.
We make sure we understand all of those. And vote on those, and then you can vote on the actual ordinance.
Okay, but, but all, everything we've talked about is not to exhibit B, is it? Is it to exhibit B?
It's all been to exhibit B.
Yeah, all exhibit B, okay. All right, so let's try to go through those and see that we are all on the same page, is that good enough? So, um, walk through them.
Okay, this will be in order that they appear in the document using the page numbering provided within the document, within the PD itself, on the upper right-hand corner of the page. The first cha, and this doesn't include any changes that have already been proposed and accepted as, as printed here. This is just change, new changes discussed tonight at the DIAS. Um, page five in the definition of limited service hotel, changing the word or to nor between the room and conference room square foot conditions, and changing the, um, number, minimum number of rooms to one hundred and fifty and allowing for less through, uh, SUP. Is everybody good with that? The next one's page fourteen.
Street paving enhancement.
Adding a, under street paving enhancements, adding a Romanet three, which would state, uh, and this is the traffic, this is the pass-through traffic control item. A minimum of two enhanced paving features as defined in this section shall be installed within the road that runs between the apartment property and the hotel property with the specific intent of calming traffic.
Everybody okay?
Any issues with wording there? Peanut gallery. The next one will be on page fifty-four.
Four B.
Four B, yes, sir. Under urban residential specific requirements, um, modifying the balcony allowance to read at two locations for a maximum total of twelve balconies. And then the next-
Did you wanna let Mayor Pro-Town Lamont do the rest? Okay, go ahead and do it, here.
He told us nine hours ago what his intentions were. Okay.
I'm sorry, couldn't resist it. A little levity here.
This is, yeah, it's fun. Uh, page fifty-six, uh, a re, a rewriting of Romanet nine to provide for the, uh, solve the gate issue and provide for the bollard solution that Tom Rutledge dropped on us. Would read, prior to the issuance of any building permit authorizing construction of any townhome allowed by this ordinance, bollards shall be installed at the end of the main road providing access to the townhomes that is nearest to Indian Creek Drive. Said bollards shall be spaced to accommodate passage by a standard golf cart, meet all requirements of the town's fire code, and shall require the final approval of the fire chief and town manager.
Okay.
I think we- And then a little bit further down the page, on page fifty-six, item B, under townhome residential maximum density, where the unit number was changed from thirty to thirty-nine, we agreed to add the word staggered between thirty-nine and units, to read thirty-nine staggered units.
Seventy-five.
And then next, we have page seventy-five.
Add E.
Page seventy-five is relative to the design and location of stormwater detention facilities. Adding an item E that would read, wrought iron fences surrounding the detention area shall be screened with a living screen with a minimum height of forty-two inches. Below the picture. What? Below the picture, it would go right here.
Yeah.
No, there's nothing about a picture, it's already in there.
Oh, it's in there.
No, there's a second-
Oh, you guys wanna add the second picture?
Second picture.
Okay, there was a, there was a second picture that, and so obviously, another portion of it would be to add. So actually, that would be adding to item D, the second picture. How would we describe that second picture? Okay.
I labeled it detention area wall exhibit on all other sides, not on Indian Creek.
It's that picture. Okay, so I will reread that as, on page seventy-five, adding, adding all detention area wall exhibits from the, um, from the, um, North American Properties presentation, and then adding item E as I just read it.
Let me ask a clarifying question to the applicant. Is there any chance that, that forty-two inch wall or fence would be masonry? Because right now, the PD does not allow for that.
Does not allow for wrought iron?
No, we specifically said a wrought iron screening with a living screen. So if they wanted to come back and say, actually, we wanna continue the masonry aspect because it looks nicer, you know, for whatever reason, that, that, you know, there's a masonry wall forty-two inches versus a wrought iron with, I'm just saying-
My understanding is that would still jive with the PD, cause-
Okay, I'm just wanna make sure that-
The intent is where a wrought iron fence is present, it would have a living screen.
That's right. Maybe that's the better, where there is wrought iron-
So where wrought iron fence is present, okay.
Right, where wrought iron present from a safety standpoint.
Yeah. So where wrought iron fences are present surrounding the detention area.
Not including the gate. To be wrought iron.
Fences shall be screened with a minute, with a living screen with a minimum height of forty-two inches excluding access gates. And that was all I had, if, if I missed one.
That's all I had with notes. All right.
I had a few things.
Everybody's a comedian.
Okay. All right, so, uh, we've agreed upon those things, and so I would entertain a motion uh, that we approve all of those changes to exhibit B in the plan development document.
Second.
Is that right? All right, I'll just make that motion.
I second that motion.
All right, Sanders moved, Reed seconded. We're approving all the changes we just listed to the exhibit B of the plan development document, zoning document.
Quick question about your motion, is your intention also to accept the other changes that have been presented tonight?
It is. And to, and to approve all the accepted, are they approved changes that are already being agreed to by the applicant and P and Z?
Got it.
Any other discussion?
Is this approving the, this is just approving the changes?
Correct. It is approving the changes along with the PD, is my-
It's approving the changes to the PD.
To the PD, so you're approving the PD, but we're gonna approve an ordinance in just a minute.
Okay.
You're just trying to get the details of what, in case someone disagrees with one thing, it's better to do it now than-
No, my thought was that you guys put a lot of thought and effort into this, and you're trying to make it better. And I would, I would've voted for that, but if it includes with the PD, I'm not gonna vote for it.
No, it's, it's changes to the PD. We're voting on the amendment is to change the PD per what P and Z said and the changes that Ryland just wrote.
So the next motion will be to vote on the PD itself?
On the ordinance.
On the ordinance, which is the approval of the PD, I believe. Somewhere I have that ordinance, it's just been too long since I've tried to-
I have the ordinance, and I'm trying, cause I was making notes too over here, so I'm trying to make sure we also have this under the urban residential specific requirements, on this handout, four B, where we added the balconies. We had the, where we added the one sentence about the two locations for a maximum of twelve. But then we also had the four B where we moved the regulation from twenty-nine down to for urban residential, so I wanna make sure that-
Wait a minute. And that was a change that you guys made as cleanup after P and Z, so-
I wanna make sure it's included in what you all understand, or-
Yes.
To eliminate the redundancy. Anybody have a change, an issue with that?
No. The, the only point of clarification here for Greg's purposes is if our next action is to approve the ordinance twenty sixteen dash eleven, it lists all the changes. Right?
Prove it as amended by, and that's why I think if you can vote on this, then we'll approve it as amended. You're gonna amend the motion, is what I'm trying to get to.
We're gonna amend what motion?
Well, you're gonna-
The mayor's motion said to approve the changes as discussed in exhibit B, as well as accept the P and Z changes as well.
Right.
So that would, that would go to, not, it would go to, let's call it both documents, exhibit B plus the ordinance, correct?
Right, and that's why I'm trying, it seems like we're sort of backwards. If we had a main motion and then we were amending it with this, is what, I'm just backwards, I'm sorry.
So are you saying make a main motion to approve twenty sixteen eleven?
And then let's amend it, yes, I think that's-
And then amend it?
Yes, sir. Somebody amend it.
All right, so I will withdraw my motion, does the second agree to let me withdraw the motion?
Sure.
All right, Holly, so I withdrew the motion and the second agreed. So now we're back to somebody making a motion to approve ordinance twenty sixteen dash eleven uh, as provided at the DIAS tonight, that has, uh, the agreed-upon changes for P and Z and applicant.
I'll make a motion that we approve twenty sixteen dash eleven, P and Z, as presented at the DIAS.
All right, you have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion, uh, by Schaffner and a second by Perro. Any discussion? It also would be in order to move an amendment.
I will, uh, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Go ahead.
I would, uh, amend your motion and include the changes, um, previously discussed. And I can list them out if you'd like, that have been introduced tonight. Should I, should I list them?
Read them, we'll have it.
Got it. Page five, modifying the definition of hotel limited service by changing the word or to nor between the room requirement and the, um, conference room square footage requirement. Changing the minimum, the minimum room requirement to one hundred and fifty, with fewer being allowed by, uh, specific use permit. Page fourteen, adding Romanet three to read as follows. Minimum of two enhanced paving features as defined in this section shall be installed within the road that runs between the apartment property and the hotel property with the specific intent of calming traffic. Next, on page fifty-four. Under urban residential specific requirements, section four, B restating the balcony requirement to say, um, except for at two locations for a maximum total of twelve balconies. On page fifty-six, restating Romanet nine to read the following. Prior to the issuance of any building permit authorizing construction of any townhome allowed by this ordinance, bollards shall be installed at the end of the main road providing access to the townhomes that is nearest to Indian Creek Drive.
No comma between road and providing. Said bollards shall be spaced to accommodate passage by a standard golf cart, meet all requirements of the town's fire code and shall require the final approval of the fire chief and town manager. Page fifty-six, item five B, under Town Home Residential Maximum Density, insert the, the word staggered between thirty-nine and units to read the maximum number of town home townhouse units is thirty-nine staggered units. And finally, on page seventy-five, to add all available detention wall area, add all available detention area wall exhibits from the applicant's presentation to Section D. And to add item E, which will read as follows. Where wrought iron fences are present surrounding the detention area, these fences shall be screened with a living screen with a minimum height of forty-two inches excluding access gates.
A second.
Did you have to do that picture?
Oh, you did that?
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, so we have an amendment by Rowe, a second by, uh, Reed. Applicant. You okay with what we've done thus far, any problems, anybody? All right. Any other discussion? Patricia, are we okay with what we are doing?
The only thing I'm seeing is still this, the amend, the addendum to Exhibit B is down here on for urban residential specific where we added there shall be no limit on number of row houses that may be connected to each other, where we pulled from that definition. It was taken out of the definition and then it got added down here to for urban residential. So if you'll just add the revision of to for urban residential.
Okay, yeah, and so to add to my motion under the definition under Section Four of Urban Residential to accept the portion of that definition describing balcony limitations, that was stricken and presented to us at the dais tonight.
Yes, sir, because that's the only thing that we changed after, the rest of it would be P and Z recommendation.
I'm okay with that.
All right. So we have a, a motion and a second with everything that's read, including the definition of urban residential with a modification to balconies. Hoover and the second have agreed to that. Any other discussion? If any none, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor to the amendment, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Everybody voted yes, except for Mayor Protam Lamont voted no. The amendment does carry. We are now ready to vote on the main motion as amended, which is basically all of the stuff that we just said, other than we are approving, ordinance twenty sixteen dash eleven P and Z with all the amendments that we have made to it.
I'd like to make a quick comment before we go.
All right, so, anybody comments? Ryland?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone for the significant amount of time that we put in to, to work through these changes. P and Z had a six-hour meeting the other night. The applicant had between various developers and representatives, council, I mean, there were probably a dozen people, the entire P and Z board. Spent a lot of time, and, and people asked me, why did it take so long? And I said, trying to, try to imagine redlining a hundred and two-page exhibit in a contract with everybody's lawyers and everybody's principals all together, all in the same room. The only problem is, there's about twenty-five of them, and it has to be done in a public meeting. So kudos to everybody, including our staff, our town attorney and everybody in that regard as it relates to the sausage factory that we've been put on display here tonight. And last week, I've seen a great deal of significant operational progress over, over how things went two years ago, and that's where I want to take my second comment before I finish, is that, um, I want to give, uh, I want to give great thanks to our town manager, Stephen Sidell, to Garrett Reed, and to everyone else on the council for taking a realistic pragmatic approach to this and understanding that while we can, while we can, we can want what we want, um, until we come up with the cash to buy twenty-six acres, this is a negotiation. And I believe we have brought all parties back to the table in a way that probably wouldn't have been expected two years ago and definitely not four years ago. And we've done it in such a way that we have corrected some of the problems that our forefathers introduced. I think that we have put some, put some business people in a position to succeed and hopefully created an opportunity for some, some commercial growth that our residents can be proud of. This was the issue that got everybody on this dais involved in the town, except for Greg, who's been hammering at everything for a long time. And well, Nick, he was mayor, don't forget about Nick. He was mayor before, and, uh, we, none of us thought it would come back to us anyway, but it did. And I think we've, I think we have come up with something that is, um, that is a huge improvement over where we had before. And anyone who would say that this council is incapable of a balanced or professional or fair debate on any issue has four and a half hours of video to watch to be proved unequivocally woefully wrong. And that's all I've got, I'll be voting in favor.
You're at your four-minute limit. I've been waiting till you finished to say that. Well, I'm going to add to that, that I don't think we would have been successful without the cooperation and the professionalism of Mike. Want to say we appreciate that. You worked with us, you worked with Stephen, you listened to our concerns, you took those back to the parties at hand, all the back team, and we appreciate that effort very much so, and, and we're, I think, laying our trust in your hands. At least I am, that you're going to build a quality product that we're going to be proud of at the end of the day, so thank you to everyone also. All right, we ready to vote? No more four-minute speeches?
Sorry.
All in favor of approving ordinance twenty sixteen dash eleven P and Z as amended, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It passes with Councilmember Lamont voting against and everyone else voting for. Uh, we now will move on to item four under our special session. Consider to take appropriate action regarding an ordinance approving a specific use permit for a hotel limited service on approximately two-point-oh-seven-five acre track located within the PD thirty zoning district located generally at the northeast corner of Trophy Club Drive and State Highway one-fourteen, bordered on the north by Indian Creek Drive and on the east by the rear property lines of the residential lots located on Bracalla Drive and providing an effective date. And that's ordinance twenty sixteen dash twelve P and Z. Oh gosh, now we got to go to a different document. So under Section Two of that special use permit is where it says a hundred and five rooms, two thousand square feet of meeting space, shall not require full-service restaurant, comply with all requirements of ordinance twenty sixteen dash eleven, which we just approved. And requiring a site plan package further detailed the proposed hotel and hotel site as required by Section fourteen oh-two, three oh-two of the Code of Ordinances. Said, uh, plan package shall require final approval by the town council upon the recommendation of the Plan and the Zoning Commission. Anything else that Stephen or... So I guess the interesting thing is to me, the special use permit is including, based on the Exhibit A, the green space that was supposedly, I guess, supposed to go to the town homes, little triangular piece, and Building C, which is, um, retail also. So if you look at Exhibit A that I'm looking at, which maybe is the wrong Exhibit A, it seems not the right document.
Think the SGP goes only to the, what, to the hotel? Not including the retail, office retail building.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it would include, so the question is, where does that line get drawn? Down the parking between Building C and the hotel, and does it exclude the little triangular park piece?
If it does exclude the triangle piece, then I would say, yes, sir, down the parking lot between Buildings C C and the hotel.
So we need, do we need a new drawing? Are we going to be vague about that drawing?
Well, the reason that was included that way was the preliminary plat showed that as a, in single lot.
It did, yeah.
Uh, and that we didn't have a meets and bounds exhibit to go off of, so we used that since that was surveyed as part of the preliminary plat. But it also applies that the hotel should be laid out per what you see on this plan here. So it doesn't really affect Building C. Building C is not really part of this SGP, it's really only affecting the hotel itself.
Okay, all right. So everybody understand that, we're okay with all of this?
I have a, a question about that, so, um, one of the things that's been discussed is, given the fact that the preliminary plat came through under the, under the approved PD, we anticipated that there were PD amendments on the way as well, and a talk of a plat amendment assuming the PD amendments were approved. Obviously now the plat needs to be amended to reflect what we just voted for. So do we have a way to tie this to the parcel that will be identified in the plat amendment?
Well, it has to come back to council, which would be an amendment to the ordinance that you approved tonight. So, eh, just like we did with the Verizon Wireless site out on one-fourteen where they expanded the area, the area, we could amend the area to be more specific to what it's going to show on the plat. Or it could be to a more defined, uh, meets and bounds area that would be smaller than this, that just covers the hotel when it comes back in front of council.
When the, when the...
When the SGP is amended.
When the SGP is amended.
As required under the current conditions.
Okay.
With the site plan approval.
Okay, so in that case, we really, it, we don't have to cons, we don't have to be concerned with the, the, the difference in the parcel being different tonight isn't necessarily material to the request?
As long as, uh, it's covering the hotel, which is...
As long as it covers the apartment.
Covers that, that, the premises, that's correct.
Then, then based on that, since it, since the, the area covered in the application covers the full property that is intended to be covered, then I don't have a problem with proceeding as presented.
All right, Ron, do you have any other comments to make about this item?
Just a, P and Z approved it five to two with the conditions that you, that are already laid out in the ordinance, and then it ties back to the, what you approved, uh, since, since the PD amendment was approved by council and is now, uh, taking effect, then you, you now can approve this through what you approved previously.
Miss, any comments? All right, so I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty sixteen dash twelve P and Z.
So moved.
Reed moves, and do I have a second? Second by Perro. Any other discussion? Ryland?
I have a question, I had a note, and granted, I was taking the notes again really late on Thursday, but I had a note that site plan approval had been a condition of the sup that P and Z added. Is that inconsistent with...
That's correct.
That is correct, okay, because... That's what I thought, but we made a mention earlier about, that made it sound like we weren't, so we, so one of the conditions was site plan approval for the hotel, okay. I would ask, um, our staff and attorney, is it appropriate to make Crea Hotels as the developer a condition of the sup?
To make what now?
Okay, so...
I don't know, the first, I didn't hear the first, to make...
Crea Hotels is the name of the, is the name of the developer, and they're not the applicant because they don't own the land.
The SGP goes to the property, so it's regulations of the property, are you asking, can you limit it to a named?
Yeah, can you? The developer, not the hotel, not the brand new hotel, but the party.
Well, I mean, it's zoning, so it goes to the land, not to the person.
You're saying the hotel presenter, can we limit that?
Right, because that's who we've talked to thus far. Under normal, the reason I'm asking this, guys, is because under normal circumstances, when we hear, when we hear a sup, it's from the person who's going to physically be developing property. And in this case, we have to go through another step to get to them at this point. So that's why I'm asking.
So this sup would then...
Go with the property.
It's a zoning amendment, it goes with the property, so it's not normally tied to a person or entity.
Right, so it doesn't guarantee us that, that Crea would be the developer, and it also doesn't guarantee us that Crea would develop a Hyatt place or a lot.
We, we know that, yeah.
No, it does not. When you, when they come back in with a site plan, then you're going to know more on that, but...
When does the SGP expire?
Six months.
Six months, so, nothing's done in six months, it goes away, start back over again.
Yeah, but they could come in, in with a different flag before then, and build whatever they want.
I will, I will say this, since I proposed this question.
They could get somebody else.
We do have the site plan approval as a condition, and so we would, we would have, if, if we had an, if we had a material issue with the developer, whether it was Crea or someone else, you do have recourse at the, at the site plan to, to take action.
Dennis, come forward please, so we get it recorded.
Dennis Sheridan, one, one Hillcrest Court. Ron, clarification please. If a applicant submits a site plan that complies with all the rules and doesn't ask for any changes, can you turn it down or can you add conditions? Which goes right to what, uh...
I will quote the SGP requirements right out of the zoning regulations in the Code of Ordinances. It says, "In considering an SGP, the P and Z commission may recommend and the town council may impose such conditions, safeguards and restrictions upon the premises benefited by the SGP as may be necessary to avoid, minimize or mitigate any potentially injurious effect of such SGP upon other property in the neighborhood and to carry out the general purpose and intent of this ordinance. Such conditions shall be set out in the ordinance approving the SGP."
That's the SGP. Go back to your first sentence, is that the site plan?
The site plan would be approved as an amendment to the SGP ordinance. Therefore, that condition may apply.
Okay, they, so even at the site plan presentation, even, we have a specific, um, part of our ordinance that designates what a site plan is and what's included.
That's correct.
Okay, that's all, just wanted to clarify.
The, the, the requirement that there be a site plan submitted with an SGP refers back to the site plan part of our zoning ordinance, which gets into specifically what is required to be submitted with that.
Thank you.
All right, are we ready to vote? All those in favor of approving ordinance twenty sixteen dash twelve P and Z, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. And Councilmember Kurt, votes against, everybody else for. All right, um, thanks everybody for all your hard work. I think we've taken care of all the business that we wanted to tonight, I would, yes, sir.
Excuse me, Chase McCree, Beck Ventures, one last time. As the applicant, we would like to thank you all for your efforts. Super impressed with all of your dedication from the P and Z, uh, up through the town council. I know it's late for you guys, uh, really, really appreciate everything. Thank you so much, and, uh, we will deliver you something, uh, fantastic, thank you.
I would entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Rowe moves, do I have a second? Reed seconded. All in favor, show your hands. We are adjourned at eleven-twenty-one.